Glad he's coming out.
Good evening. We are going to call our November 2nd study session to order. Thank you for joining us and being with us. Tammy, please let the record show that all school board members are in attendance. Our first item of business is the pledge. If you'd like to join us, we will do that at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is our approval of the agenda. The recommended action is that the Board approve the agenda as presented. Would somebody be willing to make that motion? Danielle will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Ann will second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is public comments, and I will read our statement. The Board of Education welcomes comments about issues being discussed. The Board will use this time in our meeting to listen to the public but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in the order in which they have signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It is inappropriate to address the Board about individual staffs, staff or students by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors either in the schools or in the district office. If you have materials that you would like to share, please place them in the podium, and they will be distributed to Board members following the meeting. Tonight, we do have, we do have 10 speakers who have signed up, and I will call them in the order in which they signed up. Our first public speaker is Jen Simmons. Jen Simmons. And Board members, we do have the list in front of us to take notes. Good evening, Jen. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time and for this opportunity to get to speak today. My name is Reverend Jen Simmons. I live in the SPS District. I have two children in the school system. I come before you tonight to say thank you. The task you've agreed to do for our community carries many challenges, especially in this season. As you make decisions to live out the mission and vision created by and for our district, I want to offer my gratitude for your commitments to my children and to our community's 25,000 children in the SPS District. Preparing students for tomorrow by providing engaging, relevant, and personalized education is no easy task. Thank you for this mission to all of our students. As highlighted in the definition, this extends to students pre-kindergarten through graduation, regardless of ethnicity, gender, disability, and socioeconomic status. Our growing and changing world requires that we build inclusion for all students. Training and equipping teachers and staff to have the tools they need to live out your mission is essential for the success of all students. To meet the needs of all students, a greater understanding of this history and culture are essential in this time. I wanted to take a moment. As a pastor here in our community, I'm especially grateful when we address the needs of our LGBTQ+ community, knowing that this needs to be heard and embraced. Students thrive when their needs are met and heard. Caring for our students ensures that we can build a healthy and thriving community. The district's commitment to the health and safety of our students is evident. Thank you for listening to our Health Department. Thank you for listening to pediatricians, for those who promote the best information of care for children who have not yet had the opportunity to be vaccinated. The requirement for all to mask has been a way to live that commitment to providing a safe environment for all students. Asking has been a way we can offer care to and for one another. So again, as mother, as pastor, and a member of our community, I'm deeply grateful that the health and the care of our students has been a core of your work in our changing world. Many of the real-world challenges that face our community include addressing health and the well-being of students and their families, and know that that extends to issues of racism, exclusion, and fear. Efforts aimed at giving teachers and staff the tools to help students solve these real-world problems, including diversity and training for inclusion, helps to not only address the issues for our students who are brown and black, all students of color, but builds a more welcoming and inclusive community for all students, creating an opportunity for all students to learn and grow together. So again, I want to say thank you. Thank you for your commitment to staying relevant to the needs of our students. I look forward to the ways you'll continue to provide training in diversity, equity, and inclusion for the students of our community in building a better world. Thank you for your time, for your passion, for your energy, and investing in our students in this way.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next public speaker is Laura Mullins. Good evening, Laura. Welcome.
All right. Good evening. I'm Laura Mullins, President of Springfield NEA, and I'm here to speak about the challenges SPS teachers and staff are facing. We have returned this year to a different kind of classroom. Schools across the district are filled with students who are struggling socially, behaviorally, and academically. For children struggling socially and behaviorally, the supports are lacking. While the services we have are great, they are not enough. Students needing advanced counseling, if approved by parents, are wait-listed. Even when in the program, many students need more support than weekly counseling sessions. They need daily support. These students are either awaiting the lengthy process to be completed, or there is no staff to provide the support they need. For these students, there are no interim options, so they remain in the classroom, disrupting the learning that so desperately needs to occur and frequently exhibiting violent outbursts. Although we understand and want our students in the classroom every day, ensuring the safety of all staff and students, and protecting the learning environment must take precedence. Unfortunately, staff are not feeling supported with our current discipline procedures and are experiencing inconsistencies across the district, leading to more frustration and concern. As you know, we have many unfilled positions in the district. This is affecting several staff groups. Custodians are either pressured to work overtime, or the buildings just don't get cleaned. We are lacking the paras needed to support our students, as well as having several vacant teaching positions. These shortages ultimately fall to the classrooms. Teachers are having to pick up these roles while continuing their primary role of educator. All the while, they are asked to attend mandatory building meetings either before or after school, or give up their planned time, all without pay. In addition, they are required to attend district meetings. These trainings typically offered during the school day are not able to be supported with subs, thus leaving teachers the options of evenings or Saturdays occasionally. Because of the sub shortage, teachers are asked to cover classrooms during their planned times or absorb the students into their rooms, often without pay. As I'm sure you can imagine, this type of daily triage takes its toll on the physical and mental health of our teachers. Unfortunately, when the teachers try to take care of themselves with a visit to the doctor, taking a personal day, or even a wellness day granted this year by the district, they are facing backlash. They are frequently being told they must give more advance notice, or they must have approval but are denied, or they can't take them on certain days of the week, are asked to come to work anyway because there's no sub to take their class, or they're not willing to burden their peers with the possibility of having to cover for them, so they don't even try. This cannot continue. We are facing a classroom crisis, and your first line of defense is struggling. While we are grateful for the opportunity to share these concerns with district leaders, we ask that you continue to hold them accountable to their commitment to improve and prioritize these processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Our next public speaker is Stephen Makowski. Welcome, Stephen. Did I say your last name correctly?
That was pretty good.
Okay. What is it?
Makowski.
Makowski. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. First thing I want to say is, following that last speaker, is I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for each and every one of you. It's very difficult to take your time away from your family and your friends and actually spend your time trying to help out your community, and it's admirable. When I say that, my name is Steve Makowski, as you heard. I've been a businessman here in Springfield for 25 years. My children, both sons, have graduated Kickoo High School, and they went on to open up their own business, and they've, one's an aerospace engineer, and so I know what the school district can do. And the evidence is, is when we talk to our children, and they begin to have children, and that's why I'm here, is because I'm hearing a lot of concerns of my son's friends that have children in SPS. And many of those concerns are just being able to listen. I listen to the Board meetings. I watch them online. I actually get to speak with many teachers at this point. I have an agenda for that. Also, I listen to parents while they voice their concerns, where they have cries and concerns for children learning. Parents are actually on the phone crying because of what they're trying to achieve for their children. Teachers and parents right now in our district are frustrated and they're upset. Their voices basically convey a message to me that Springfield Public Schools need to protect their teachers and allow the teachers to do their job. And teachers should be teaching with books rather than putting children in front of home books. Springfield Public Schools is leaning heavily on the technology. It's understandable. We're in that age. However, we owe our kids the opportunity to have teachers that are allowed to teach. Our kids themselves, they deserve teachers other than Chromebooks. It's time for our school board to stand up and stand up for our teachers, our students, and our parents. I go back and I remember an article that was in the newsletter. There was an individual by the name of Sarah Schofield, Sheffield, excuse me, or Schofield.
Schofield.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you very much. And she's a former president of the Springfield National Education Association, and she remarked, and I'll kind of paraphrase with her, "Decisions to pile onto educators' workloads are made, are being made without teacher input, without regard to how it impacts them, their students, and their families." If our schools are not getting input from our teachers...
Stephen, your time is up. I'm so sorry. It is. Yes. We appreciate hearing from you.
You bet. Thank you so very much.
Our next public speaker is Lola Butcher. Good evening, Lola, and congratulations on your recent recognition with NBLAC.
Thank you. It's nice of you to know about that. My name is Lola Butcher, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the Board. In the last several months, 27 states have introduced bills or taken other steps that would limit how teachers can discuss important aspects of our country's history. And as you are all aware, Missouri is one of them. Even more disturbing, 12 states have actually enacted restrictions, either by legislation or other means. A couple of years ago, I would have never thought this was possible, but America is changing very quickly. If teachers have to worry about whether they are complying with House Bill 952, as it was introduced in Missouri Legislature last year, our society is going to change even faster, and not for the better. As the Board develops its legislative agenda for the upcoming session of the state legislature, I will trust you to vigorously oppose any bills that prevent public schools from teaching history accurately. And I would appreciate your guidance in how SPS constituents can help our legislators understand they should not be dictating curriculum decisions. That is the job of professional educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Lola. Our next public speaker is Kristy Folnecki.
Hey, everybody.
Good evening, Kristy.
How are you guys doing?
We're doing well.
Oh, sorry I'm running late, logging a court, but congratulations to the new school board members and to the new superintendent. And I come here as a friend, but as you know, I'm also an attorney, and I do represent a lot of parents and children in the school district. And the reason I'm here is just to ask you if you could please drop the mask mandate. The parents just want a choice. And so I know you represent a diverse group of people, diverse group of constituents, and everybody has a different opinion, and I understand, because I was on city council. I know you have to balance, especially during COVID, we've all talked about this this whole year, you have to balance competing interests, and it's hard being in your position. And I totally understand, as a former public official myself. But you know, I think, looking at the data now, we're different than where we were a year ago at this time. We are not under a state of emergency with a governor. So that's a big, big issue right now. That's, you know, a lot of the cases that came down kind of hinged on emergency status, and so we're not under that emergency status anymore. And so every day, something new is coming out. As you probably know, the cloth masks do not work because of the pore size. So there have been many studies, and I only have a short time period so I can have that information emailed to you, because I know that you like to see the data. There's actually, recently with the Pfizer vaccine that they have been talking about, the CDC came out, and I have it here. When the FDA was meeting, I found this surprising, only 94 children ages 5 to 11 have died of COVID. That's .00012% of all the COVID deaths. So I actually didn't even know that. And you can look this up. It was on the CDC website. And then it said that it was the eighth leading cause of death among children. And then it also said that children die, 969 deaths from accidents. So you know, children are not in a high-risk group. They're, you know, although tragic, the deaths, obviously, you know, you all have kids. I have six children. You know, that's something that we don't take lightly. But if you look at the totality of what's going on, and I having a state of emergency, kids are not the ones that are dying of COVID. And so they're in a very low-risk group, and I think the benefit to the mask, there's no benefit. And if a parent chooses, if they have a sick child and they want to wear an N95, that's completely appropriate. That is their decision. I just don't think that it's appropriate, given what's gone on and all of the data that we have right now, to make it mandatory. And interestingly enough, there's, there's all kinds of studies that have come out, you know, again, everything's changed in a year.
I'm so sorry, Kristy. Your time is up.
Oh, I get, okay. But I do have NIH. I'll send that to you, too.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Our next, our next public speaker is Barbara Blake. Good evening, Barbara. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Blake, and I'm a grandmother of a child in the school district. And I want to thank every one of you here for allowing me to speak, and for each of you for your time, effort, and dedication in achieving your goal of sitting on this school board. I have several topics that I would like to address. I have attended the last Board meetings, and several other speakers started me to speak. I heard one gentleman speak about the option of standing for the Pledge of Allegiance but not having an option of wearing a mask. I heard others speak about the constitutional rights being ignored. Nothing was mentioned about patriotism. I heard others speak about critical race theory and LBGTQ. The position this Board has taken on each of these issues is an indictment against this Board. It shows the trajectory this Board has placed the children in, in this district on. The numbers of children, as of Google, from 2020 was 24,309. Each of you on this Board are accountable for each of these children. Each child is an individual, not a socioeconomic class, and I know you need to make group things for the government for the numbers. They're not a particular earth-suit pigmentation, but a child. I once read an article, and this impacted me, and I read this a long, long time ago, about a 23-year-old man who was executed in prison due to a crime he committed in which someone was killed. The last words he said was, "Don't let your kids do what I did, and don't let them make the decisions I made." This speaks to the heart of this young man, a heart that was not hardened but soft. This, to me, is an amazing thing, considering that this young man was thrown out of his house under the front porch by his father, locked out of the house, and never to be let back in, back in at the age of eight. There's no mention of any family coming to his aid, school, or even church. And what was he going to do at the age of eight? He didn't see himself as a victim. He saw himself as a channel that could possibly make change in someone else's life. The final wish he had was for no parent, anyone in a place of authority, to let the kids make the same decisions he made. Children don't come into this world hating others. Someone once said, "Some things are taught, and some things are taught." Critical race theory is just that, a theory. To expose children, 24,309 of them to this is experimenting with these children. This school board itself devised the validity of this theory, and as I look at this school board, there is diversity on this school board. Every one of you sitting in these seats on this board had to overcome many obstacles, persevered, and pushed forward, and some have obtained the honor of having a doctor in front of your names. I challenge each of you to search deep into your hearts and ask yourselves, is this trajectory we have placed these children on the right thing for them? Is this really the direction we want this school district to go? Because it is not only for the 24,309 that are currently, but that will be in this school district.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. Our next, our next public speaker is Cheryl Clay. Cheryl, Cheryl, welcome. And if, do I recall correctly, you just received an honor as well?
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah. 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 Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to try and clarify the description of diversity and inclusion. That term has been so distorted this past couple of years. From a black woman's perspective, and a mother, and a grandmother's viewpoint, I'd like to clarify that term. Diversity is a practice of including and involving people from a range of different social and ethnic backgrounds. This will enable all to have equity in the process. SPS has not done well with this in the past. An example of a huge red flag, that I will put this disclaimer out there, this Board was not responsible for, fail was the annual reenactment of the Battle at Wilson Creek, complete with a Confederate flag and guns, complete with black students assuming the roles of slaves. Needless to say, this made those students feel inferior. Needless to say, this encouraged non-minority students to use this as an excuse to be bullies and jerks. If the administrators of that school had input from a diverse person and allowed them to be included in the formatting of that reenactment, it might not be considered so hateful and belittling. We teach and learn from our past, but we must be mindful and intentional to be inclusive in ensuring that past does not create a harmful atmosphere for our students. The current witch hunt and hijacking of that term of diversity and inclusion is very disturbing. Our history is our history, and we're not going to continue to cherry-pick it and whitewash it to make others feel comfortable. If it's okay for the reenactment of the Battle of Wilson Creek to be taught, then let's continue to teach the next generation, the next chapter in this country's history, that chapter where the good Christians, men and women, spit, cursed, and threw rocks at little black children as they integrated the schools. That is part of our history, but yet we don't want to talk about that. So let's not ignore it or forget it. Diversity and inclusion does not mean whitewashing and changing the past or pointing fingers for responsibility. It means to include diverse groups and their perspectives so they can truly be inclusive for all student groups. I ask that SPS continue with their diversity and inclusion training in our schools for our staff, because some of them still don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Our next public speaker is Christopher Moorhead. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi. Welcome. Thank you. My name is Christopher Moorhead. I'm a French teacher at Pitt ville Middle School, and I am here today on behalf of SPS World Language Teachers advocating for the expansion of our elementary language programs, the reinstatement of our middle school language programs. The mission, as you know, of Springfield Public Schools is to prepare all students for tomorrow by providing engaging, relevant, and personalized educational experiences today. World languages play a key role in carrying out this mission at a time when people are more connected than ever due to an expanding and interdependent global society. Springfield Public Schools has 35 elementary schools. Of those, only three have world language programs. Research shows that the earlier a child begins learning a second language, the better. Compared to monolinguals, bilingual and multilingual children have improved reading, writing, and math skills, generally score higher on standardized tests. Every child deserves the opportunity to achieve by learning another language, not just a select few. Research also demonstrates that early language learning has a significant impact on a child's overall academic performance. Providing our elementary and middle school students the opportunity to learn a new language, we are also contributing to their success in the classroom. The benefits of early language learning include enhanced problem-solving capabilities, the expanded ability to analyze how language is used, stronger literacy skills, stronger memory abilities that improve the learning process, robust interpersonal communication skills, to name a few. As language teachers, we believe that world languages and language learning boosts academic performance in SPS students. Languages are a necessary skill set in the 21st century, because real life does not have subtitles. If we choose to ignore the impact that world languages have on the academic success and social well-being of our students, we are merely feeding into the notion that monolingualism is the illiteracy of the 21st century. We must view languages as necessity rather than a luxury for our students. The expansion of learning at the elementary and middle school level must become an educational priority for Springfield Public Schools today if we are to prepare our students to be globally and academically competitive tomorrow. We ask that you invest in the academic success of our students by investing in world languages. Have a great time.
Thank you, Christopher. Our next public speaker is Emily Smith. Good evening, Emily. Welcome.
Hi. Hello, and good evening. Tonight, I come to you not only as a concerned parent, but as a trained healthcare provider in infection control. Masks are ineffective, a health hazard, and unnecessary for children. According to the American College of Physicians Journal, a large-scale study of 6,024 participants was conducted with equal parts wearing masks and equal parts not wearing masks while outside of the home. The difference in the number of individuals that contracted COVID-19 was .3%. The CDC stated in October 2020 that cloth masks efficacy is debatable, and that they completed a retrospective review of 19 studies. They found that the main way to have any efficacy at all with cloth masks is to wash them daily. They also had to be made a very specific way with specific material qualities. No one is monitoring this at the school level at any capacity. The likelihood that a significant portion of students' masks meet these qualifications are slim to none, just to gain the potential for the possibility of .3% benefit. Kids need to breathe fresh air, not incubated pathogens all day. I've seen students with horrible acne and impetigo from masks. One Florida lab tested students in an adult mask that had been freshly laundered prior to being worn. After being worn for one day, roughly five to eight hours, they found pathogens that caused diphtheria, E. coli, pneumonia, meningitis, and tuberculosis, just to name a few. Children have been found to touch their faces significantly more often now that masks are used, increasing the likelihood of childhood illness. All of this for a possibility that they may prevent some transmission of coronavirus if worn correctly, if made correctly, if washed every day, but the CDC still has no quantifiable data to support any of it. According to doctors at USC, masking children has an enormous potential to cause long-term harm. They believe it causes psychological stress, decreasing the ability to bond with teachers, inhibits the essential nonverbal communication learning, and overall increases chances of chronic anxiety and depression. Additionally, a journal from the American Institute of Economic Research indicates some of the adverse psychological and physical effects, such as hypoxia, shortness of breath, increased acidity, activation of fear and stress response, immunosuppression, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive performance, predisposition for viral and infectious illnesses, chronic stress and anxiety and depression. They go on to say the long-term effects of mask-wearing can cause health deterioration, developing of chronic diseases, even premature death. The research is out there, and it's being ignored. Why are we still masking these children when, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, they have immortality... they have a mortality rate of 0% to .03%? That data is from 10 days ago. Seven states in the U.S. have reported zero deaths in children. I ask you to accept and acknowledge the science that masks are ineffective, harmful to children, and unnecessary. They absolutely do not need to be mandated in any situation. I implore you to use better judgment than what has been displayed up to this point. My suggestion is that masking be made optional effective immediately, and I ask you to give the option back to the parents and all COVID decisions being made by the full board going forward. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Stephanie Sproul. Hi. Don't know that she's here. Okay. All right. We will move forward. Our next, there are no information reports. We'll move forward with our preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders. That brings Dr. Mulford to the podium.
We got one more.
We got one more.
Called her name.
I did. That's what I just called.
Masked, green over a mask. Everything.
Yeah.
I stand before you to demand choice masking yet again. I mentioned the emotional and mental abuse in children the last time I spoke, and I wanted to share a story with you. My seven-year-old son absolutely loves school, and he is extremely intelligent and makes friends so easily. He's literally only had one bad day in his three years of schooling. He's in second grade. I picked him up one day in September, and the tears started flowing, so immediately I was concerned. He said that one of his staff actually looked him in the eyes and said if he didn't wear his mask properly, he would be responsible for getting everyone sick and cause the school to quarantine. I was unbelievably furious. That amount of pressure and blame on a seven-year-old is abusive, and it needs to stop. Our twins were put on modified quarantine a couple weeks ago. They weren't sick and never showed any symptoms or any signs of being sick. Harvard Middle School actually had the audacity to tell us that our kids can go to school, but they weren't allowed to participate in any activities outside of school. It stated that we needed to read this little form and respond by saying we comply. What happens if we don't agree or comply? Because I can assure you that my husband and I do not blindly comply with irrational demands. Again, I do not co-parent with you, nor will you ever have a say in what we do while our children are not at school. These are just two examples of your school board being abusive. Your power is abused in attempting to dictate what we can and cannot do with our children outside of school hours, and the mental and emotional abuse that is happening to our children every day. During the week of October 25th through the 29th, there were 21 cases of COVID in schools and only 35 active COVID cases in the whole entire city of Springfield, which is probably over 170,000 by now. I'd say that we are doing exceptionally well, and it's time to end the so-called plandemic. The health decisions of your 25,000 students should never have been allowed to be a one-size-fits-all type of rule solely based upon one person's opinion. I know you don't want to hear us yell at you every other week, and I can assure you I have many other things I'd love to be doing right now, but if we do not stand up and demand for our freedoms back, we fear that it will be lost forever. I can't sit back and let anyone else be taken, or any other, anything else be taken away from our children. It's time to become a mask choice school system, and I can assure you that our group of concerned parents is growing, and we will continue to be back at these meetings and speaking up until our voices are not just heard, but legitimately listened to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item, we do not have any information reports. That leads us to our preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders, and that brings Dr. Mulford up to the podium. Good evening, Dr. Mulford.
Good evening, school board. I did not receive any questions via email, but if you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them at this time.
That's right. This is our study session, so we are not voting on it at this time. So please take time to review these documents and direct any questions to our superintendent and Dr. Mulford before we vote on them next regular meeting. So thank you. That takes us to our next board policy. And there are three board policy drafts there for our review, the following, our policy updates that were brought to us by MSBA. And so take time to look at those over the next couple weeks and provide any feedback to Dr. Lathan. And I know the team has already reviewed that internally as well for us, and we were, we knew that these were coming our way, so we're just bringing that up. We'll keep moving forward with our agenda. That takes us to new business, and our first item is legislative platform. And Dr. Lathan, I think, just has a few things to share about that.
Yes. Good afternoon, board members. By attach, you will see the proposed legislative platform for 202022. Only a few changes from the previous year because as a team, we stand behind accountability and funding. We did make a few edit changes. So on page one at the bottom, you'll notice at the very bottom there under imitation tobacco cigarette, we made changes due to legislation that was passed in the last session. On page two, there are two additional items at the top that we added, additional supporting funding to enhance student and school safety. That is a concern. You've heard that also just based on everything as a result of not only the pandemic, but prior to, just insurance, student safety and school safety. Also creating a comprehensive state plan to address improvement of educator salaries. That's so important as we move forward and not only as we try to attract especially teachers and other educational personnel, but we're able to retain them. And so those are the two additional items on page two. Do you have any questions?
What was the internet sales thing? So there's a lot?
It was on cigarette, the electronic cigarettes and alcohol-related products. So that changed in the last session. So we actually struck through that because it was already covered, internet sales were addressed in the last legislative session.
Okay. So you just left the other one.
Yes. So that we are consistent with what has already passed. What has already passed.
Scott, you have a question?
That was my question.
That was your question? Okay.
So what's happening with internet sales, I guess?
Internet sales.
No, but they're not taxed. They are now taxed, or?
Previously, we're not.
But now they are. That's why.
So we eliminate that.
Okay. Because it's already been taxed. Yes. Okay.
And I know, Charles, you've, as being our MSBA rep, and they're working on their legislative platform that we'll be reviewing and hearing this week. Just, I know we, this is just our draft, so any input that you have to, any feedback on the draft, you know, please give to Dr. Lathan in the next two weeks before we vote on this as our platform.
And I would observe that MSBA frames theirs as advocacy positions because the MSBA will only advocate for positions that are approved by or affirmed by the delegates. And there are some substantial changes, I think, possible changes. I think there'll be lively conversation. Theirs is not, technically speaking, a legislative platform. They are advocacy positions, and MSBA in all circumstances, I think, respects the autonomy of individual districts and boards, advocating positions that may or may not align because they do their own duty. But you're exactly right. There'll be, we'll vote against Friday, the delegates. And I suspect it will be a very lively, rich conversation.
All right. Anything else on that for us? Okay. All right. We will keep moving forward. That brings us to our next agenda item, which is school police organization, and that brings Penny Rector up to the podium. Good evening, Penny.
Good evening. You have before you this evening Pursuit to Board Policy HH, a resolution that certifies that a petition for election has been filed by Springfield NEA, and that petition contains a sufficient showing of interest to allow an election to move forward for our school police department. That election would, will be held on November 16th based upon that showing of interest and is consistent with that process that we have outlined in Policy HH. So we're asking you tonight to approve for that process to move forward.
And just to clarify, Penny, we, because this is the first time, we've got some new board members, and the first time it's come up for even some of us veteran board members, but that our approval is approval of the process according to policy. It's not implying that we are voting for or against whatever their decision is. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Since the state law has been in flux the last few years relative to bargaining in school districts, we fall back to our Board Policy HH. And what we are asking you tonight is to move forward with that process that we've already identified.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And based on the information that you provided for us, it appears that the NEA and other organizations have done their due diligence of the process that was required prior to this particular moment.
Absolutely.
And can you, sorry, one more question. Can you also clarify the timeline of why it's important to vote on, or for them to hold a vote on November 16th?
And so the policy delineates what that process looks like and the timeline within which we have to host an election. We have come together and we agreed upon that November 16th date, and so we need this board's approval this evening so that we can meet that posting and notification timeline. We will actually post tonight upon board approval so that there's sufficient notice to those who will be impacted of the election and the content of that ballot measure.
As opposed to first read during study session and a vote during regular?
Isn't it two weeks?
It is. So, yeah, it is.
So this is the day.
This is the day. This is the final day that we can have you approve, get it posted, and comply.
Okay. Penny, I'm going to ask you to read the recommended action then, and then we'll see if there's any discussion.
So the motion is that the board certify that the petition for election filed by SNEA on August 2nd, 2021, contains a sufficient showing of interest to support a secret ballot representation election in the school police unit of district employees, and that the board set the secret ballot representation election for the school police unit of the district employees to be held on November 16th, 2021, from 8:00 a.m. until noon at the school police building, to be conducted by an election neutral selected by the district and NEA, and that the board approve the ballot for the representation election presented as Attachment A. So that is the document that's included in your packet, and authorize the superintendent to use that ballot for the election.
Is there somebody willing to make that motion? Maryam will make the motion. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Scott will second it. Any discussion before voting?
It rolls right off the tongue, doesn't it?
It does.
Thank you for reading it, Penny. Okay, seeing no discussion, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Penny. Our next agenda item is Bond Project Updates and Actions, and that brings Dr. Mulford up to the podium for our change orders and agreements.
All right. I'm filling in for Dr. Shaw, who's still recovering from knee surgery. He says he's watching us right now, so.
We'll see. We'll see about that.
Relatively small list. As you can see, the bulk of the change order is going towards phone system upgrades at Bingham and Vissett Elementarys, and then there's a couple small items there. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to get them answered for you.
I don't see Bingham and.
I think it's Sunshine and Williams.
Lord, I got Sunshine and Williams.
Maybe.
It's still a small list.
Go by what's in front of you.
Yes. We are voting on what's in front of us, the change orders for Sunshine and Williams and the multi-site.
Yeah. So the multi-site, that's the phone system upgrades.
Okay.
That's Bingham and Vissett.
Oh, okay.
I think Sunshine and Williams are just the total on those other items.
That's the other items. Correct.
Okay.
They're all small, but they.
Guys had me confused for a second.
Well, we, we don't have a school listed. We just have multi-site.
That's right.
There says multi-site. That's.
Big dollar.
Bingham and Vissett.
Okay.
We get it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. The recommended action is that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented. Is somebody willing to make that motion? Charles will make a motion. Is there a second? Danielle will second it. Any discussion? Motion passes. Our next agenda item is, takes us into our strategic discussion regarding our focus area reports, and I want to direct our, the board's attention to our new process of taking notes during the presentation. Once the presentation is concluded, I will ask the board then to discuss anything that is affirmed, there's aha's, any specific questions you want to ask, or anything to aspire that you would like the superintendent to look at related to the focus area report. That brings Dr. Nicole Holt, our Deputy of Academics, to present the Focus Area 1 Goal 2 End-of-Year Presentation. Welcome.
That was a mouthful, huh?
There we go.
Absolutely. So thank you for the opportunity again to be with you and share a little bit about Focus Area 1 and Goal 2 End-of-Year Report. So that will be the presentation that you have in board docs. I also will remind you that while we're not reporting or presenting, you also receive Focus Area 1 Goal 3 White Paper. So both of those items are for your review tonight, and we'll dig in here. So just a reminder about our strategic plan. So of course, we situate our work into these five focus areas. They have goals within each as well as strategies and action steps. And our primary time today will be spent on Focus Area 1, which is student success and learning support, specifically within Goal 2, which you kind of see outlined there. So if I think about putting that into context of what it really means, this is about how we provide really rich learning opportunities and experiences for our students. We think not only about that in terms of their academic achievement, but also related to their personal growth and related to how we determine what's best for them based on how they are as a unique and individual student. So it's, it is academic achievement, but we view it in a lens that's much larger as well. So just a reminder about priority metrics, which are obviously the data metrics that we utilize to determine our effectiveness. So those metrics are listed in two categories, climate and culture and academic success and graduate outcomes. And tonight, our time will be spent primarily in the academic success and graduate outcome lane. So just to provide a little bit of additional clarity here, I'll draw your attention first to what's highlighted. That you notice when Dr. Linder introduced tonight that the heading was internal metrics. That's because our conversation tonight will be about those internal pieces only. So it will be K-8 data for IREDDI, which is that internal assessment that we provide to our students in those grades spans. And then we will also discuss course failures at the middle school level and course failures and credit deficiencies at the high school level. Everything else that you see situated on this side is embargo data until December by the state, and so you will receive, much like last year, for those that are on the board, you'll recall you got an internal report at this time, I think it was actually October of last year, and then we followed up again in December. It'll be similar format. That data is listed there for you, December 7th. At that time, you'll get the additional DESI items that you see here as well as the full and complete white paper. So that's just all context for where we find ourselves today. So the specific strategies that we'll spend time in tonight under Goal 2 are related to academic growth. And so what I want you to remember about this specifically is that this work really is about continuous cycles of improvement. So we think about collecting that data, analyzing that data, and then making instructional shifts and modifications based on what that data says. Per our normal, we're going to give you those metrics by division, so elementary, middle, and high school, and then the emphasis will be on gaps between subgroups as well as subgroup performance. So again, all just context and reminder for how we situate the data. We added this additional slide tonight because it's been a minute since we've been back with you to do a focus area report in which the data is organized in this way. So just a couple context pieces for you. So think back with me, this is an end-of-year report, and so fall of 2020 was the start of a pandemic, and so we slowly transitioned students. of a pandemic, and so we slowly transitioned students back to both hybrid at some point, and then to seated by the end of 2021, which would have been May, and that's when we would have been assessing these students. So the upcoming slides are going to give you the data I already mentioned, but I want you to know that we didn't give I-Ready end-of-year in 20, May of 2020. So the comparisons that you will see will be from end-of-year 2018, '19 to last year, 2020, '21. Okay, so that's the comparative, because that middle year, we didn't assess. So it will be, like I said, I-Ready, course failures, and credit deficiencies, but keep that in the forefront of your thinking there. So again, once you see the next couple of data slides, on the left, you will find the overall disaggregated performance, and then on the right, it will be about the gap closures. So I just want to remind you of how it will look. So we'll dive in, as I mentioned, to each division specifically, and we'll begin that with elementary, which is K-5 students. So as you look, we're speaking here about status, and so the first thing that I'll draw your attention to is that over half our students were advanced or proficient on end-of-year reading I-Ready assessment. So May 2020, end-of-year, 54-ish percent of students. I think it's important to also note that we see some pretty significant shifts in proficiency for our Hispanic students, as well as our ELL students, as well as widening gaps for those groups. We know some subgroup gaps between full and free pay students, between Black and Hispanic students, as well, and Black and white students. So what I'll say about that is that those gaps are ones that we have seen before, right? But what we could see as some level of affirming is that the gap closure is also showing in this particular data. So that could be because of different decreases, but it also is showing that we are making work, right? So you see those gap closures. The other thing I meant to tell you before we got to this slide was, obviously, when we get to the gap closure side, a decrease is a good thing, right? So sometimes we think about it the other way. So just reminding you that we're trying to close the gap, so you want to see that number decreasing. If it is a positive, it means the gap is widened. So now I'll shift to math, okay? Shift to math next. So again, we could say about 50% of our students are proficient or advanced. However, we've got a 12.4% decrease in proficiency over that year span from, so when they were tested in 2019, to when they were tested in May of 2020, you see a significant difference there. Also, we've got subgroups demonstrating, the least impact would be our students from IEPs with that negative 3.7, and then reduced with a negative 9. Those are our lowest numbers. And again, subgroups with the greatest differences, including ELL and our Hispanic students when we think about math. So before we go into middle school academics, we always like to highlight what are we doing about the data that we see in front of us? And so I just want to remind you that we are in deep implementation of our literacy items, so this is not new curriculum for us. We have been, we're now in year three of this, and so we are really beginning to deliver what we would consider to be those solid pieces of instruction, and focusing a little bit more specifically on intervention. So we have training going on for our K-5 teachers, for SPED and ELL teachers, that gives them an extra layer of support to help those kids that are not proficient, that are not meeting the mark. And we also, at the beginning of this year, did give whole benchmark assessments that are aligned to the curriculum to all of our students. In the past, if students have come on grade level, then we haven't given them the full gamut of that Fanta-Senpanell assessment, and with that, we get much richer data about where students are. And so it was important to us as we came back, for us to know exactly where they were in literacy, which is why we chose that step specifically. And then here are the next steps related to math. So as you know, we've had lots of discussions about our math implementation, so this is year one of our new resource, and you see the different strengths listed there. What we also are doing is very intentional work around priority standards, so how students are mastering what the state asks them to be mastered, and giving intensive opportunities for reteaching, helping our principals, helping our teachers to understand that, and apply the right intervention to support our students. You also recall, we talked a little bit about ESER positions, so seven district numeracy coaches were added this August. They are, they are, they have five buildings each, and they are supporting those leaders, supporting those teachers with understanding and implementing the curriculum richly. So I'll now shift your attention to middle school academics. It'll be similar data setup as what you saw for elementary. So here is the reading data listed first in students for grades 6 through 8, again, end-of-year, May 2020. So again, 47-ish percent scored advanced or proficient. Students with disabilities demonstrated an increase of 4%, and the largest achievement decreases here were for full pay and ELL students in those categories. Similar to elementary, we're seeing some gap closure between subgroups, but we recognize that there could be other data factors at play to see that. So again, this is literacy for 6, 8. We'll show you a similar breakdown for math. So positive increases occurred for end-of-year achievement for our Black students and white students, so you can see those increases respectively, 2.1 and 1.6 listed there. However, we did see decreases for the remaining subgroups over the, I won't say previous year, the year before the previous year. And then the gap analysis demonstrates also gaps for subgroups. We do see some gap closures there. I will note here that our secondary teachers have been implementing our IM curriculum longer than our elementary teachers, and so even in a pandemic time, even when we weren't able to control who was seated and who was virtual, we see gap closures happening here. We see, I mean, we see proficiencies advancing here as far as differences go, so that's something positive to note. We can't completely link it to that, but it does make us feel a little bit better about what we believe to be true about how we're instructing in the area of mathematics. So also for middle school, we will share course failures, which I mentioned earlier. So what I'll note here is just a reminder to you that as we look at course failure data, every other piece of data that we've shared with you has been literacy and then math. So course failures is any course that a student in that grade span could be taking. So it does include things like electives, health, PE, et cetera, right? So it's not just the literacy and math pieces that you've seen similarly. So 13% of our kids in grades 6 through 8 in this data failed a minimum of one or more courses, which is up 4% from a prior year, so you can see that. And we obviously see gaps between free and full, Black and white, Hispanic and white, and also that, an increase over year, year over year. So that's course failures, specifically for middle school. So again, much as we did for elementary, we'll share with you next steps in literacy and next steps in math. So we are training all ELA teachers in the implementation of their new curriculum. What we like about this curriculum is that we have teachers helping develop pre and post tests that are identified per unit. So that gives us a lot of great specificity, and then we've got formative assessments that are built in ongoing cycles, so that we have more than just that summative data. We've got formative pieces ongoing, which help us really know how to tailor our instruction. We also are utilizing Mastery Connect, which you'll see that on the next slide as well. That gives us drill down into specific skills, which is important because we know that that's going to be very similar to how they are assessed on the MAP test at the end of the year. So both at the middle school and high school level, you'll hear us talk about intervention time. So we have built that into the academic day, really for students 6, 12, but we're just talking about middle school here. So this gives us recovery time, so that we can make sure that kids are mastering content, and you can see different areas in literacy that we work on related to that intervention piece. And then in mathematics as well, we're talking a little bit about the instructional coaching support. So you heard me talk about the numeracy coaches, district numeracy coaches at the elementary. At the 6, 8 level, we have IM coaches that are helping build that capacity for our teachers. They are supporting in teachers' professional learning community time, supporting those leaders, and eventually, they will help us to set up what we call demonstration or model classrooms, so that teachers can actually go and see exemplars taking place and learn how to replicate those best practices. We also are offering opportunities for teachers at the middle school level to meet with others that do the same work as them, and collaborate around the district adopted resource, and how we can help students better prepare for those grade level assessments. And then I already spoke to Mastery Connect, but it is the same programming that we use to support both in literacy and math. Course failures, we'll see some steps here that are similar and mirror what we're doing at high school, but we provide weekly reports to our sites related to students who either have a D or an F, and our buildings do a lot of intentional work about who those students are, who those classrooms and courses are, how we can support them to help students with their grades. Again, we talked about daily intervention time built in. Some schools are providing opportunities for after-school tutoring, specific to the core, so specific to reading and specific to math. And additionally, we saw at the end of last year, a lot of second chance opportunities. Again, we have over 1,000 courses, right? When you think about the number that a student could take, and so many of them are getting the opportunity to provide extra help as needed with relationship to that. So high school is the final band of data that you will see here. Again, it will be course failures and credit deficiencies that we will talk about at the high school level. So when you look at course failures, I already gave the caveat, but remember, when you're looking at this data, it's any course, not just reading or math. And so we see that 13% of our kids in 9, 12 failed a minimum of one or more courses, which is up 5%, so very similar data to what we saw at the middle school level. Our African-American students and students of poverty were obviously impacted the most as you look at the course failure data, and I think one thing to note would be that our ELL versus non-ELL, there was marginal gap increase there, so you can note that as well when you look at across the subgroups. And then credit deficiencies is the piece that's a little bit different for high school. So again, this is those students on track to graduate in that four-year, that four-year cohort band, right? So if they are deficient a credit or more, then you're going to see them not being on track to graduate, and so that shows 21% of those students from that last year, 9 through 12, banned. 21% of them were credit deficient in some capacity, and so what we'll tell you is that that really is specific by building, when you start to think about what does it mean to be credit deficient, and that's an increase of 5%. I think one thing I want you to keep in mind here is that a large number of our students make up credits in the summer, and that is not included in this data, right? Because this data ends with that May of 2021. So we have kids that will come and work and recover credits beginning in June and then through the second session of summer, so that doesn't, that isn't represented in this layer of data. So here are some next steps when we think about 9, 12. So I already described a little bit that weekly DF reporting, that's happening at the high school level as well, as is intervention time. I think important to note that seniors are monitored weekly for their process towards graduation, but in addition to that, we're also tracking within each grade level band. So we're also doing work for juniors, for sophomores, and for freshmen, because we know if we wait until they're seniors to start tracking them, then that is problematic for those that have not been set up on a path for success over time. And so we've, we are being more proactive in our approach to tracking those bands, to keep kids from failing courses and being credit deficient over time. Obviously, credit recovery options are available at all of our schools that catch kids that fall out of sequence and help them get back on path. And then of course, we do Missouri Options Program for students, so that they can test out for competency and still have an option to learn, or an option to earn their high school diploma. One thing that we haven't included before, but I felt like was something that would be of value to you, is we talk a lot in these next steps about what teachers are learning, what they're doing, and I think it's important for you to also know that we do a lot of support for principals. Research would tell us that second to a classroom teacher, the principal's the most, has the most impact on instructional and academic success of students. And so when we think about what we're doing strategically across that group, we've been intentional to make sure that leaders are trained when new curriculum is coming out. We, pre-K-12, are focusing on the professional learning community framework and model, and how we can support collaborative teams, specifically leaders to support teams at their sites, to really get into the student-by-student data. We also are increasing our analysis of priority standards. We know that those standards are identified by the state. They serve to help us as gateway standards to help master the others, and so if we can really focus intentionally on those, we know that the state will assess us on all the standards, but if we can really focus our attention on the priority, that helps us to master others. And in addition, the executive directors, myself and other members of the academic team have been engaging regularly with our leaders to determine what do you need to support your schools? As an instructional leader, what do you need to be the most effective to help teachers? And that includes giving them learning, this is just a couple of things, around the time they're spent in classrooms, how they're running their professional learning communities, and what kind of feedback are you giving to teachers to really support them at the student level? So I just wanted to highlight a couple of those things that have been real intentional focuses for the academic team. So the other strategy that we will highlight tonight, again, there's seven, I think, within, or seven within this one goal, we're reporting specifically on two of them, is related to modern tools and resources. And so again, I just remind you that we know that the technology items that we use within the classroom is one tool of a variety of tools that we utilize to support our students. We know that we have to capture and engage students in a lot of different ways, and utilizing Chromebooks and other pieces of technology is just one of those things that we do. But we wanted to let you know, obviously, Chromebooks were provided to our first and second grade students, iPads to early childhood and kindergarten, as you think about last year. We were very intentional at providing hotspots, which got our students access to be able to continue their education even in hybrid models. And then obviously, our tech integration, it is about providing students a tool, but it's also about the integration of systems to help our teachers do a better job at analyzing the data that's inputted for our students. So that includes the work with Mastery Connect, as well as Edge of Climber, so I think that's important to note. When you think about next steps specifically for this, we're always in continual refresh of the devices that we provide to students, as well as other audiovisual and tech equipment that we might be utilizing to help our teachers and our students. We are doing refresh cycles, obviously, to other standard equipment, and then I think, again, you've heard some mention around Naviance and other tools that might provide us the best data, and we don't do that in isolation. Our IT department is hugely involved in what we onboard to make sure that it's functional and working the right way to support our teachers and leaders. And the last piece specifically is around what we do to provide really great virtual learning opportunities for our students via launch. And so this is just some data to let you know what occurred from fall of '20 to summer of '21, so you can see what we were able to accomplish. I think of note, obviously, is that we use Missouri teachers, so you can see the number there of retirement eligible compensation, and 63% of that was stipends that came directly back to our system. And even in a pandemic, we continued to grow our partnerships and be able to not only really serve our students, but serve other kids across the state that don't have access to really rich virtual education. And a couple next steps. As with most seated environments, our launch team worked to provide the same kind of supports that we did seated to virtual kids, that include mental health support expansion and helping students that are virtual with that. We also were able to provide special education and gifted services now to our launch students. You know, it's been interesting that we, and they are great at gathering feedback, but what we heard is now more than ever, even our virtual students need the interaction with the live classroom teacher, and so shifting that to allow for our virtual students to have that as a part of their day has been really important and impactful. And if you haven't checked out the launch website in a while, the parent portal and the way that we are engaging and giving parents authentic looks and peeks into the learning that their students are provided in virtual education is notable. So that is the end of the actual presentation, and I think I will step back from the podium and let you take over from a dialogue.
All right. You might want to get a drink of water. You did a lot of presenting, so thank you so much, Dr. Holt. Well, we've heard a lot of good information to digest, and we've had time to look at it as well in our board docs, so I'm just going, outside of going through every box, I think I'm just going to say, I'd love to hear from you all, what was affirmed, what are some aha's, what questions might you ask, and what would you like our superintendent to aspire to hear from us on this particular area focus report?
I have a question. So I-Ready is a program that we choose to participate in, is that right? You know how many other districts in Missouri participate in I-Ready?
No, because it's a decision district by district.
Is there ever an opportunity to compare what Is there ever an opportunity to compare what we're seeing and trends that we're seeing on our iReady program only to other districts who are using this program?
We have not. We've just compared as it relates to our MAP scores, from my understanding. As we move forward with the 22, 23 school year of having a universal screen of K-12, that's why we want to have that information. But like I said, I polled various school districts' superintendents in our area to see, and everyone is using different programs.
Are they seeing some of these same trends, however?
The overall trends as it relates to MAP scores. Like I said, we've held more discussions around the overall state assessment results as opposed to individual school districts.
Thank you.
But we allocate resources for iReady just internally. Yeah. Yeah.
However, if I'm correct, we haven't fully utilized iReady services, which includes the progress monitoring, which could help classroom teachers to make adjustments to their learning in the classroom based on iReady's scores.
That is correct, and that's why we are looking at, we're in the process now reviewing different universal screeners, including iReady, and looking at the full package. We've only purchased a portion, and so it's not providing us all the information we need and the information for teachers and principals as it relates to next steps.
So just, this is a question of clarification that I've gotten from the community about these kinds of presentations. Can you help us understand how iReady is used on a regular basis in the classroom? Like, is this a weekly assessment? Is this the end-of-the-week assessment? Is this a monthly assessment? Does it assess what they're learning at that point in time? Is it retroactive to what they've learned? Parents are asking me questions, and they wanted me to ask the question so that we can get kind of a discussion going on that.
That's an excellent question. And also, Dr. Mohamed Khan has asked that similar question various. So district-wide for K-8, our schools are administering the iReady assessment at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and at the end of the year. Schools make a decision to administer other assessments outside, and that happens across the district and across the country. And so, but iReady is the district, I say district-endorsed assessment.
So in addition to the district-approved assessment that happens beginning, middle, end of the year, classrooms or school buildings may choose to additionally assess weekly, monthly, based on their curriculum choices, to assess students' learning on a regular internal basis basis? Yes, sir?
Yes.
And I presume it would be accurate to say that these are assessments, they're not grading per se. This is, I mean, there's a very big difference between grading and assessment. These are assessment purposes so we can adjust, I go G, adjust content, those kinds of things.
Yes, that is correct.
Good questions. Good ask. Any other?
Actually, I do have an ask, and it's, I think I know the answer to this. On slide 16, it says there are 13% of kids failed one or more courses. So that percentage is 13% of kids failed one or more. Is that the right number that we ought to be looking at? Because I can imagine, I hope not, it's not the case, but I could imagine that, you know, some student, if he or she is having particular challenges, it may not be just one course, right? So using 13% might actually be an artificially low number. And would a better number be the number of, the number of course enrollments failed? Does that make sense? Or that failed, it wouldn't be who failed? So I'm not really sure how to make sense of that 13%. Other than, obviously, we'd all like it to be lower, of course. But I'm not sure that the percentage of kids who failed one or more is as illuminating a number as we might want.
And Steven could be in this count and fail five courses, and Penny could be in this count and only fail one.
That is exactly right.
So does it still out to the level we need it to be?
Yes. Yeah, I think so. A more disaggregated number might be more helpful as we plan strategy moving forward.
Well, thank you. I have so many questions.
All right. Good. All right, they'll answer mine.
On slide, I think it's 11, K-5, next steps literacy, your third, the third year implementation of this new literacy curriculum, three years, how many years? Is it five or? I can't remember.
I'm sorry, your slide 11?
Slide 11. First bullet says you're in beginning year three of implementation of new literacy curriculum by Fountain and Pinnell. Three years of how many? The five years or how many?
The cycle to six.
Six, okay.
And you start to look at it in year five.
That's what I thought, okay. All right.
However, we have discussed that we will start evaluating and looking at data in year three, because waiting five years is a major issue, and students have gone and completed, basically, elementary school, and we haven't addressed those deficit issues. So this is when we need to start, and we are, we have, as part of all of our curriculum evaluation of looking at that. So it's adoption in the cycle, but that might need to change moving forward.
And we've talked about them both, that's a board office that we talked about.
Right.
Number, I think we need to talk about it.
Do you mind if I jump in real quick? It's a follow-up question to, it's kind of, it's a very specific question about literacy curriculum, that we're in our third year of using the Fountain and Pinnell curriculum, which I'm very familiar with. And it says that we were also training all of the teachers with the Sunday system. Is that system also Fountain and Pinnell's, or is that something else? And do they align with the two curriculums?
How, from the year, or like, is this a back question?
They are, they are not, that is not a foundationally product, it is.
Horton Gillen.
It is a product. The alignment is that it's all focused on these skills and the way, so it's one of the two programs where I support you.
Thank you. So one of my questions with regards to our curriculum in general, but specifically because of my interest in literacy, do we have any fidelity measures for teachers maintaining the curriculum? Because Fountain and Pinnell's is a research-based kind of curriculum, there's a lot of evidence of support, it's a very popular program because it's very, it's research-based and it has a lot of good outcomes. Do we have any, do we take any fidelity measurements of teachers in their teaching of this curriculum or other curriculums?
I would say not normally, except if that was, well, there's, our members are able to, uh, track, uh, that sort of job.
The reason I ask is because I do work with literacy in the community, I'm working with some parents and hearing from parents who have young children, kindergarten, first grade level, who are doing sight word reading, which is not part of Pinnell's and Pinnell, particularly for decodable words. And I was just wondering if we're taking any fidelity measures to make sure that they're doing the curriculum as it's supposed to be done, because it is effective when you do it the way it's supposed to be done. So just adding that, we may look into some fidelity measures in the future of ways of making sure that teachers are using the curriculum as it should be used.
And we have in the past implemented what we call fidelity checks for how and training principles on, you're going into the classroom, and you're specifically would use elements of it.
So that has been a practice that we've utilized in the past, and so surfacing that now, I think, is appropriate to think through deep implementation of a resource.
I would sort of make an observation, kind of jumps off of that.
I mean, fidelity checks are, like, assessment is really valuable for determining what we ought to do more of, and I'll speak only from higher education. And one of the things higher education is guilty of is we change only by addition. So we do more stuff, right? And my concern is that we just give classroom teachers more stuff, do this, then do this, and then do this. Often what we don't do in these higher education is we don't take, we don't stop doing things that are not having the learning impact that we want to have. So I don't think it, I, well, I think, I'm certain it's not a matter of teachers not doing enough. They absolutely are. It may be that we're asking them to do some things that are not sort of paying their way, or that we're intellectually.
Or that they don't.
Figure out what to do and not to do, just keep.
Or that they don't buy into, or that they don't fully understand. Because, you know, like, you know, just with regards to sight word, you know, reading, it works for some kids, but it doesn't work for all kids, and it doesn't support their learning of actually being able to decode new words. And so either teachers are doing it because they've learned some other way, and they're just maintaining that practice because it's what they learned initially, even though it's not a part of the current curriculum, or they don't really buy into it. And so either way, it needs to be addressed.
I would agree with that, and I think, I feel to your point, that, you know, maybe we're going to do fidelity checks as formally as we might, but we do have kind of built-in system with feature feedback. My experience with teachers is, if you want to know if something is working, ask them, they will tell you. Sometimes quite faintly, they may will tell you. And so I think using that as another bit of data, right, to figure out what we should continue doing, doing more of, doing better, whatever. And then the stuff that, just because we've kind of sort of always done this, maybe we ought to stop doing that stuff. Now, I say that understanding, I'm not really sure which stuff fits into the category.
We're doing a lot of smiling over here, these two tables, and we'll tell you why, because we're saying some things that we discussed. Our senior leadership meeting next Wednesday, one of their roundtable discussions is what should we stop doing? That is the title. First, we tried to dress it up and change the title, make it sound all nice and great. And then, I think it was bread or.
Stop it.
Just stop it. Let's just call it just stop it. So we are starting there with our senior leaders, then it will move down to building level also.
Scott.
I was patiently waiting.
Good discussion.
Patiently, yes, we are having good discussion.
Right. So I'm looking at the K-5s, next step math. Did you say we're in year one of the math curriculum?
Yeah.
We just starting it, or was last year's results were based on what year one? This is year one. Last year, we saw significant, and the numbers aren't good, okay. Um, did you get a recent persistency in math? For K through five, okay? And that was the old system. You have a new system in there now.
So it's important to note there, and we're different points throughout the year. Last year, it was possible at elementary level to, like, we can grade.
Different things. So the prior curriculum, what we were piloting as potential new, and then an online tool for the times that we were completely virtual, because our previous curriculum didn't work in a virtual context. So when you think about that, just that in that context, it's important to know.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. It helps a lot. They hired seven new literacy coaches in August 2021. Is that enough staff? Is that enough support staff? Or does it seem like there'd be more?
I think the goal was higher, but we experienced issues with hiring, and so we were able to change that.
Gets back to the labor shortage and.
Yes.
Okay. Great, and I have other questions for, for six to eight math, you know, illustrated math coaching, you know, is this enough staff?
Which slide are you on, Scott?
Oh, no, I'm slide 18, that's 18. Six through eight, next step for math. No. It sounds like it's not, it may not be enough staff if it's similar to K through five.
We are able to turn elementary, this is, but we put it at the middle school level.
Right.
Providing the many additional supports, we were able to do the consultant piece in place of that. But the original plan was to have more bodies than just the two consultants.
Okay, great, thank you. And slide 17, skipping up six, eight, six through eight literacy, no. This time, this is the last bullet, this time designed for intensive support to recover specific reading content that was not mastered.
Slide 17, the last bullet about the intervention time.
Reading content is not mastered with emphasis on key reading skills. So you spend a lot of time, I think, is that right? Doing this when so many kids are behind?
So the strategy of building that easy academic day gives everybody an opportunity to do.
Right. And so it gives us a space to hold time for that intensive intervention.
Right. Okay.
Which we have, like, that has happened in certain buildings in prior time, and now we have adjusted the schedule 6:12 so that it's a part of the academic day.
Okay.
So there's like a block.
A block in the day.
Period.
Period. Okay, I'm sorry about all this question.
No, no. It's going on.
What about slide 19, course failures?
Scott, I'm just tagging on. So what are the other kids doing that are questioned?
Yeah. So I, Dr. Woodard may be able to speak a little bit more specifically about that time, the block where students are not needing intervention. What are the other students doing is the question.
So the students don't need intervention, what are they doing?
Give me that block time.
Six through eight.
Uh, what, six?
Six through eight.
Some of those cases, um, where it's happening.
Okay. Okay, slide 19 now. You have opportunities for, this is the last two bullets, opportunity for actual learning time provided through after-school tutoring, second chance opportunities for makeup work and post-work provided, I understand that. But is there any data that shows how many take advantage of this?
Scott, right now, I don't, I don't know that I could provide that data right now, because there are some people who have to track. I know, so, that's her providing.
Then that after-school ban for some of the core, and yes, they're getting second chance opportunities, but capturing the number of times that a teacher just says, hey, Steven, meet me after school for a couple minutes, you need an extra, that's happening all the time, right? So it's, these are some of the structured places, but I don't even think that compares to what teachers are just doing because it's the right thing to do for kids. But we could definitely get back with some of that data on how many are utilizing it.
Great, thank you. The same in the high school, I through 12.
Which slide?
Oh, I'm on 23.
Okay.
Well, what's through tiered intervention, seniors are monitored weekly for graduation progress through tiered intervention? What's tiered intervention?
RTI, MTSS.
I'm sorry.
Something like RTI or MTSS, maybe?
So then I think it would be determining how are off of credit deficiency or course failures they are, and then applying the right level of intervention to get them back to where they need to be, right? So Stevens might look different than Johns, depending on where he is deficient or what courses he's failing.
I'm going to tag on since you're talking about credit deficiencies in high school. I just, I think something that was affirmed for me was, I feel like the ghost of Christmas passed now, but just being here long enough to know that we used to be reactive, and now the shift that you all have made to be proactive. And we know that if we're aware of deficiencies early on, and we can correct or intervene, then we're more likely to keep them engaged in school and they don't drop out. I remember this over the years, and so I just want to affirm the team for shifting from a reactive to a proactive. It's made a difference in our graduation rates, it's made a difference in engaging students, as well as finding ways through our launch programs to also help kids recover back those deficiencies or course failures in ways that we didn't, that weren't possible before. So just while you're talking about that, I just wanted to mention that, and that parents know early on instead of finding out, you know, when it's too late, when there's too much to recover, and then it's hard to capture someone back.
Okay. Okay, my last question to have to do with.
I'm not going to, I don't, I'm not going to hold you to that, Scott. That's your last question.
Okay.
It's your current question, your current question.
Love engineers.
That's right. I'm just teasing, I'm teasing you.
Yes. That's great. Have to do with the technology, maybe we're going to discuss this, you know, one-on-one with Dr.
Discuss it here also.
I'm sorry?
I said, let's discuss it here and then one-on-one.
Were, before COVID hit and all this, you know, were you originally planning to give everyone, including those in early childhood, iPads and Chromebooks and ages, you know, kindergarten, first, second? Were you planning on that originally? Or did it just come up because of the hybrid?
Was that only, you know, the hybrid, starting, you have to back up every year, and it's just, like, what we call. If it was that, it's definitely, absolutely, in the last year, they have had it.
Okay, at elementary level, are you figuring, all K through five, or are you seeing this third, fourth, and fifth, or all of it?
The second, the prior, so it comes down to, you know, the first, the eighth, the fifth, the sixth, the seventh, the eighth.
Okay.
It gives them one, two, three, four, five, ten. That's, I guess, something about the prior two, and different factors.
And tagging on just. And tagging on, just a clarification. If I recall correctly, was it that the teachers were saying, we only have four in the classroom, or we only have five? And they were saying, we'd like to be able to have everyone, okay?
So can I get clarification? Because this is something that comes up quite a bit that I hear in the community and I hear from parents and others. My experience going into the classroom and working with families in the community is not that the kindergarten classrooms are using Chromebooks instructionally, that the, not Chromebooks, even the iPads instructionally. They are tools that were used during the hybrid period of our instruction. But primarily in the kindergarten, first grade, and third grade teachers in classrooms, those are not used during their daily instruction for the most part. From what my experience of going into the classroom and looking, can I get some clarification on what instruction looked like with Chromebooks in preschool, kindergarten, first grade, third grade?
Scott, so definitely there's a rotation, right? Like they utilize it. So think about corners or centers, students working obviously with a teacher that's providing the direction structure, guided reading instruction or math, guided math instruction. And the students may rotate to a station or a segment of their time where they are on adaptive software, or they are doing some sort of piece digitally that's tied to the curriculum. But that usually lives in like the 20-minute band, right? And then they're rotating off of it, so.
So in visiting some of the elementary schools that I went to in the last six months or so, they have quite a few books that are utilized in the elementary classrooms that are book sets that the teacher has and each child gets one. So that's still happening? It's still happening, okay? Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
That was my next question. Thank you very much.
That was your gagging question.
Can I, I need a couple of clarifications. So you said that if the pandemic hadn't happened, we would have moved towards it because we were moving towards illustrious math for K5, which is a digital platform. So can you clarify that?
But the workbooks don't have lessons or answers or examples. These are only on, you've seen them? Can you share them with me? Because the ones I've seen in my tours.
Let me address that. Let me address that. As it relates to the curriculum, teachers make instructional decisions in their classrooms. They'll make a decision to actually use the hardbound copy of the materials that we purchased. Others make the decision to copy, or at least about Xerox a many years ago.
Memegraphs.
Sounds in the audience like we're in the same age group. They make those decisions. So those resources are available. And I've also provided that information to you basically in your question. So that's available across the district in our purchases that is made. Where I think it gets, well, I know it gets tricky at the senior leadership level and also sometimes at the board level is we're trying to go and kind of be hands-on inside of a classroom where the expert is that classroom teacher. And he or she makes a decision. Back to the question around fidelity, our role as a senior leadership, the curriculum department, our executive director and principals is to go and monitor and provide those resources. We say that we just started with our IM at the K5 level this year. We're out, I've been out observing classrooms, Dr. Hope, Dr. Pilly, Dr. Anderson, and we're looking at this. But we also have started the training process. And even with the technology teams, there are some, and some teachers that may be over-reliant on technology. But part of our responsibility is to part of that conversation of, okay, as a reminder, like Dr. Hope said, this is a 20-minute block. This is part of a student's learning station or center, as we used to call them many years ago also. And so we just have to keep that in mind. Various opinions, some people like it, some people don't. I still have a lot of questions, they'll tell you. I've asked a lot of questions about it. But I'm going to rely on what the data tells us. One of my concerns, and it goes back to, we purchased the program that provides assessments, but we didn't purchase the progress monitoring. So throughout the year, we're not seeing true of that progress. And so it's going to take us a while. But the materials have been purchased, but that decision that a teacher makes, and I'm saying that as a former teacher, when I closed my door, yes, I had to follow those standards, but the way I delivered those standards was based on my style as an individual teacher.
Which I can say, one of my appreciative moments from what Nicole presented on that, I think, one of the last slides about working with principals. Because while classroom teachers are the front line, from all the research that I've read, principals, it trickles down. And so when you have a good principal who is monitoring their classrooms and knows what their teachers are doing and the needs of their teachers so that they can help them make adjustments, then you get better outcomes. And so the fact that we are investing in our principals who can then support their classrooms, and in having a superintendent and a board who supports principals having that autonomy over their schools, a certain level of autonomy, so that they can do the work with their classroom, with their teachers in those buildings.
And that's our area, honest to be, we have a team will tell you, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Hope, and Dr. Pilly, that's our area of needed growth in supporting our principals. We've pushed out a lot of training, a lot of support, but we haven't focused as much on making sure the principals understand the why and then the how to implement and how to go in and conduct those classroom observations to make sure we're implementing with fidelity. So we're going to roll in some things back. It's a little rocky right now because, like I said, we are stopping something. We want to receive some additional input from our principals next week. And we're also hearing from teachers. You know, I'm hoping I gather with really good going out, speaking with teachers, looking at materials, I know they're tired of giving me material. Are you shaking your head now, Phil? Not giving me reports and reports and stuff and calling people back to a meeting. So we're getting there. But I go back to, it's going to start with principals. And at least start planning, our team, our leadership team, we're starting our kickoff for 22, 23 on November 19th, planning all of that for the upcoming year. And so I'm going to ask you, you all again, just be patient. If anyone wants the results to move and student achievement to improve, it's me. And they will tell you. And it's been tense around here this past month in looking at those beginning of the year scores. Very tense. Because we have a lot of work to do, a whole lot of work to do. So we own it, we own it as a team. And we're not going to continue to do things just as like as always we've always done. And we've made that commitment to each other. I'm making the commitment as superintendent to you as board members and to our parents and staff members.
I have just two more questions, I think.
Okay, but did we get all of Scott's? Did we get his 30 question though?
Just one question, more. The cost, you say annual refresh of student devices. Are you seeing a big inflation or increasing cost? What did you expect? What would you have seen in the past? What would you expect? That typical goal?
I think that it's a lot of models.
All right, thank you, I'm done.
Do we still have reading recovery? Yes? And so it's a reading intervention in addition to this SANTRE program?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And is there, some schools have one or other or both, or?
Some will cite teachers manually, depending on their title allocation, how much money is allocated to them from the federal dollars. If you're terminated, you can add up and can decide a menu of options for your recovery. Teacher interventionist is one of those choices that they can make.
My last question is kind of a very broad question. And it's, it's heart-wrenching for me to look at our data. And I know it is for all of you all too. My question is kind of a, I don't know, it's a theoretical question, I suppose. But just looking at our data, and one of my frustrations has always been, even before I was on the board, listening to the presentations and watching the data, is to have celebrations for mediocrity. And I don't, I don't like that at all. And I look at this data and there is not a whole lot of space for celebration. Even when there are increases, your starting, your starting point is so low. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, what's our threshold? What would be a good threshold for us to, like? It's hard to measure success when we don't have a threshold for what we're reaching for. We're not going to take a group that is at 33.3%, mastery in iReady for K through five. We're not going to take them to 100% in a year. But what's a celebratory threshold that we can, you know, like, it would be nice for us to have some of those thresholds to reach towards so that we can actually have some celebration rather than saying, well, they're only at 40%. Well, 40% from 33 might be something to celebrate, I don't know. But what's the threshold is what I'm asking.
So setting a threshold, so let's look at it like this. Most, when you're looking at data from year to year, and I'm just giving you a previous experience, not, because I'm not well-versed in iReady. I'm well-versed in some other programs. And so when you look at growth, and let's pretend, okay, let's go to slide 14. I want to make sure. And so we're looking at 46.8%, right? For all students that were at, above or in vain. And so as you set goals, you normally are setting goals anywhere from 3% to 5% growth per year.
Right.
So, because I don't necessarily want to say a threshold, but we know we have some catching up to do, right?
But it's a goal, but it's not presented here. And so, you know, as an audience and as a community, as we're watching. Because one of the questions, you know, people ask me a lot is that you seem to focus just on a certain population of students, which is not true. But I point out some of the deficits because those groups tend to have those thresholds or goals not met. So all of our students are performing at a level that is concerning. But I want to know what the goal is for a real celebration. That's really, whether it's a threshold or not, is not as important. Is what's the goal for saying that this is a successful growth? And you just said it's 3% to 5%. And so that...
That's realistic when you think about SMART goals. I want to go, let me push back a little bit. Because celebrating even at 54 and 56% is not a celebration.
I agree.
And, you know, it's 100% of our students are performing at or above grade level.
I agree.
We have to be realistic, but we don't stop trying to meet those goals. And you're right, this is, like I said, this is the format that we use. We are finalizing all end-of-the-year reports in December. It's going to be a heavy night, so take your vitamins off. Because I don't care how many presentations we have that night now at this point. Because we need to close out all these previous reports from the previous year. And data really in December is really hard when you start at school in August, right? And so it's going to take us some time to set some goals and to move forward. But it's not a celebration. Like I said, this is stuff from last year. And the team will tell you, I could easily distance myself because I wasn't here. But I own this as the leader of this district in saying, hey, this is not okay. It is not okay for any of our subgroups. It is not okay for all of our students. And then it works for our subgroups, let me think about it. I mean, I just want to know that's, and these leaders sitting around on the front row and around here, they feel the same way.
I know they do. I'm asking a question from the perspective of the community also.
Yeah, so those are the conversations that we're holding. We do need to have a more formal process. And we talked about that this week with AAA and Dr. Range of our reporting and how we get there. Once we've made a decision on the screening we'll use, next year's reporting will be a little bit different as opposed to those, how the mid-year looks and the end-of-the-year reports. And reporting on MAP data, this is a state issue. This is not an SPS issue, current administration or previous. Even for the state to release their final MAP scores in November, December, it's just ridiculous. And that's why you can't count on the state assessment. You need your local internal assessment.
Absolutely.
I think this is the key point. Because I had noticed, as somebody who focuses on language a lot, I noticed that we don't talk about celebrations nearly as much.
I agree.
And that's a good thing.
Yes.
Very good thing.
Yes.
Because, you know, we look at the data and we know that our students in many cases are not where we or they or their parents want them to be. And I think we have had a tendency to focus on all the stuff we're doing. In some ways, all that stuff kind of piles up. It doesn't add up to something. And it's the adding up that matters. It's the adding up to where we want to go, whether it's 3% to 5% increase per year. I don't know what the right number is, but to have a goal out there. So when, to rip on, read a comment. So we will know a point of celebration when we get there. As opposed to, well, we've done some more of this, and we've done some of this. And that goes back to my previous observation about usually all the stuff we're doing, much of that is the classroom teaching. And it's just more stuff, and more stuff, and more stuff. And finding the right stuff, which may be a little bit less stuff, is kind of the magic, whatever that might be. I think we're moving in the right direction.
Right, and so when we get to the right stuff, the needle moves. And then we can celebrate because we know we have the right stuff.
Yeah.
Because it's moving the needle.
Yeah, and I'm really happy that we've gotten rid of the red and the green up here. Because that sort of symbolizes kind of the celebration.
I was going to say, do we compare it to other schools? Have iReady at other schools?
Not iReady. And Danielle asked that question, or we have not compared to iReady. From what that I'm aware of, we compare the MAP schools.
No, no, I know that, but I thought you said that they have it at other schools.
And Columbia is normally who we compare ourselves to.
The MAP, the MAP.
For MAP, for MAP.
And that will be available in December.
We have prelim, but we had to do cleanups. And if I'm sick, please correct me, team. But we received some preliminary, then we had to make some corrections. For example, someone graduated and maybe we didn't have it coded correctly. So now you're going through the cleanup process and for this final.
I'll believe December 7th from all the state of all believe December 7th.
So I have a few, just a couple of questions. But I wanted to follow up on a couple of things that Sharita had touched on. So the book sets. Good. Are these sets that the teachers buy on their own and we provide these books? And then do kids can take them home, or is it just at school? Does that work?
I don't, we don't advertise that kids could take them home, right? Their mechanism for taking home books would be library checkout.
So there's plenty of books for them?
But some teachers do do. If there's a book that they're working on in their small group, there are, I think, some still established programs where I take home that book and read it. The one I got in class, I read it at night to my parents and bring it back. So we do do some of that, those systems. But the classroom libraries and the guided reading sets are things that we provide across the system to classrooms.
And then in terms of the, you know, there's, you do math or reading or at the 20-minute time, the kids move through. So would you say in general, and I know this is a really hard question, but your ideal, what you imagine, what you think is being implemented based on the theory, like what percentage of the day do elementary students, particularly the K through second through third, are spending on it to buy on their conference? In the classroom?
Well, I can't tell you that, but I can tell you that we, they have minutes of instruction that they're supposed to be providing per desi that our curriculum team looks at as they develop, right? And so our people should be spending this number of minutes in literacy, this number of minutes in math. But we don't do a number of minutes on technology.
Yeah, so like in general, is it a minority? Or is it like a house to the home, or is it a majority of our instruction delivery? And I know each teacher has their own, like you said, the door closes and you do what you...
Which is right, it would be...
But it's preferred. You're the expert. But we do have the curriculum that is, you know, laid out and provided with those resources. A lot of them are on digital platforms, a lot of the sources that the students go to. So would you say like it's a minority hours or a half or?
I wouldn't say because it's going to be dependent on course, depending on what you're doing at middle and high school, and it's going to be...
No, I meant elementary schools, I'm sorry.
Again, I think it's going to be teacher discretion about how they're implementing the curriculum. But certainly, we've had lots of pointed conversations at the elementary level about how it is utilized, when it is utilized, when it's appropriate. And again, it's meant to be an engagement tool. But nothing will replicate their experience with that, the direct instruction that they're being provided via their teacher.
Would you say that the work that goes home is also a minority on digital? Or is it, or you don't have a sense of that?
I don't know what I have.
I, I don't know what I have, but it depends on the site, but also depending on the precise, you know, the features, some of the factors, some of the practices, practice, like the homework from home, from that side. So, many of them, some of them, they send their, um, their, their students to be brought to the school, that's why they're, they're wanting to go home, so they know that it's really practical, and that, that's what we really set, we don't, we don't, we're private classes, we don't, we don't, we don't call them practice.
So that's okay for them to leave it at school?
It's okay for them to leave it at school, and so, and, and, yeah, so when their student does take it, you know, we want them to practice, to, 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 to.
Maryam, my experience has been, again, you know, I work with kids in the, in the community who, with literacy, many of them who are SPS students. Uh, my experience that the kindergartners are often bringing home, uh, books that they're told to read with their parents at nighttime, whether those are, whether those are books that were, uh, decodable books or not, I don't know, but they have to likely be decodable books, which is probably the kind of books that are part of the guided reading sets. So those are the books that I'm seeing, I'm hearing from parents, from our kindergartners and first graders who, who are taking home. I'm also seeing, unfortunately, kids who are also bringing home homework to do sight words, um, and they have to practice their sight words every day. That's not a part of the curriculum, as far as I know, but that is what I'm also seeing as being brought home by the kind, by the kindergartners through third graders. But for the most part, when I'm hearing about their literacy instruction from these families, it's bringing home a book to that they're supposed to read a certain number of minutes per night.
Great question.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. Nope, question, just kinda piggybacking off of your question, which is, um, uh, I know that we've had one-on-one devices for our, I'm just gonna say fifth grade math teacher, I'm just gonna use that. I'm gonna say Steven is our fifth grade math teacher. You're getting picked on tonight. Um, and that, and, and so we've had that for a while with our teachers wanting the one-on-one devices for kindergarten, first and second, and I don't even know who I'm asking this question to, so I'll just direct it to Dr. Holt, and then, um, so what I have found, or what I had heard from teachers over the years with some of that one-on-one adaptive software was that they were getting, and correct me if I'm wrong, they were getting real-time data on how their student was doing on learning that particular skill. And that, instead of having to, you know, I'm thinking when I first started teaching, instead of having to go back and grade papers, you know, take, that took a lot of time, and therefore the teachers are able to really, in that moment, know where their students are at and have more instructional time because of that one-on-one. I'm just using that fifth grade math. Is everybody attracted?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and that it allowed some students to move faster-
Yeah.
-in their learning because they could have that one-on-one continued learning. But then a teacher would know where they need to have an intervention with a group that still hadn't caught something. So I guess my question is, is that's what I recall, and I'm just curious if our kindergarten, first and second grade are also having that ability now that the district has, instead of just four devices or whatever, are you finding that teachers are able to use that type of real-time data to work more intentional with our kids?
One is that the software allows classroom teachers to provide the grade level content to everyone. So, because I know in my classroom, I'm gonna have a variety of kids that are both below grade level and above grade level, even if I'm a, you know, regardless of what grade level I teach, so I'm a fifth, fifth grade teacher, I'm gonna have kids coming in below that grade, and I'm gonna have kids that are coming in above that grade. Adaptive software is the moment where they're getting the exact instruction that is on their level. So it, I think it's twofold. It helps a teacher say, "If you're above grade level, then I'm hitting you with what we have to know in my direct instruct time for fifth grade, but then your adaptive software can take you on up." Or the opposite, "I'm giving you fifth grade content because that's what you're gonna be tested on, but I'm also giving you the opportunity for remediation at your level." So I think it does both of those things. That's its intention.
What's this adaptive software called?
So that would be DreamBox for math, and it would be Lexia for, um, literacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the kids have access to that on their phone book?
Yeah. And any of them do additional work, right, outside of what's required of them at home? Because-
It's game-like.
It is, and it gives them, it's what like-
It's like a game, and so they, they can practice those skills, and you can actually see, like ABC Mouse, all of those programs where it's like a game, and so the kids think they're just playing a game, but it's actually testing their literacy and their numeracy skills, and that, the data goes directly to their, their teachers.
Yep.
Is this just for the youngest of children, DreamBox and Lexia?
K-5.
K-5.
Yep.
Okay. So the teacher gives them instruction, and then they have a choice of going to DreamBox or not?
So usually, that, that adaptive software piece is a part of one of the stations, one of those rotations.
So are the kids still doing math work and-
Yep. Everything still, yep, everything still occurs in their ninety-minute lesson, and that becomes a part of what you do after the direct instruct.
Oh, so you're still doing homework by hand?
Well, it depends on if they teach, if they're gonna teach it.
Okay.
But I just wanna be clear that from a central office standpoint, from the curriculum department, they are not pushed out in a direct, and says, "You can't, you can't do this," or they should be just paper and pen only, or pencil, or, I'd say that's an instructional decision. If a teacher says, "Okay, now that you have your own device, uh, when you go home at night, I want you to spend twenty minutes on DreamBox, twenty minutes on this." They could also do that assignment, uh, but they do have access. So I just want them to feel that they have the materials, that they decide whether or not they actually need the hard bound app before.
And there's, there's high efficacy for using those kinds of program like DreamBox and Lexia at home on a, on a, on a device versus doing paper homework where someone may have to help you. The DreamBox and Lexia takes you through those steps automatically. It's like a game, and so, uh, there's a, there's a whole lot of efficacy studies out there that demonstrate the benefits, particularly when we have a lot of efficacy studies that say that homework can be problematic for children, particularly when they have different level of people who can help them at home with it or make sense of it, particularly with different kinds of, you know.
But I think we also have to keep in mind that, you know, as a school district, teachers set a standard of, of what they're going to do based on the curriculum information that the curriculum department provides them of how that instructional days looks like. But we also, also have to keep in mind as parents, if we want our students to do more at home, that should be a parent's responsibility to add and request those additional assignments. So if you're a parent that don't, don't support a use of technology at home, then have them to do that, but I think that becomes a decision at home. But these are the structures that we're providing. And going back to even to that ninety-minute block, we're sharing with teachers and principals that information of, this is how that ninety minutes should look for instructional time. Uh, I mean, teachers, but they make the adjustment based on the students that are in their classroom, uh, so that ninety minutes could be, sometimes it could be all direct instructing, that's a lot, or ninety minutes with little people, but if they feel their class needs, their class needs to do that, they would make their decision.
But you said that they, when kids go home, they have access to the hard bound? Did you mean, what did you mean by that?
So, I've been in the classroom, that they have access to their workbook, so it follows the student list.
Okay.
They have a access, but sometimes teachers make a decision, if I'm repeating this incorrectly, Dr. Holt, please figure it out, but sometimes teachers decide, "Okay, I'm gonna pull out, and we're gonna do pages five to ten." So I'll pull those pages out, or I might copy those pages, or then they're putting the pages up on the, on the screen, and the students are working through that. And so they have that access, but the teacher makes that decision on what they want you to take home, and what they want you to actually work on.
And, or they could do DreamBox as, like, I want you to spend fifteen, twenty minutes. So some of the concerns I'm hearing, Sharita, and I'm seeing is that, you know, impulse control at, at that age is very difficult. I mean, it's difficult even for adults. So it's, it's very seductive to do other things that aren't DreamBox or Lexia. Um, and that kids are on their, their computers all the time, but aren't making the gains that you would expect for kids who are on their computers all the time because they're not necessarily doing productive things all the time.
You're talking about the kindergartners, the third graders on the, on the-
All ages.
All ages. Um, I mean, I, I don't know about, uh, the other kids, but the kids who I have access to, those, those laptops that they are, those iPads that they bring home, they don't have a whole lot of programs or access to other things on them. There, there's a few games and programs that are educational games and programs, and my, my personal, this is my own personal thing, not anything regarding this school board, is that, um, uh, I would rather them be on those, uh, devices, playing those games and just watching television. I mean, it's still a learning atmosphere, and there's, there's lots of support for whether they're doing it online or whether they're doing it on paper. If they're doing something educational, it's still educational. I still prefer that over some other activities of doing something mindless. And, and from what I understand, they just don't have access to everything on those devices.
Still filtering, I mean, we have the filtering software, but also you have to think about, it's about supervision.
That's right.
I think a lot of, you know, if, if students, whether they're elementary students, they're high school students, college students, if they're doing other things, then that's the issue with supervision, as opposed to saying all technology is bad.
I don't think anyone's saying all technology is bad, but I think we have to own up to some degree that we, we share some responsibility in the, in the screen addiction and the harm that it is doing students, especially in this time that we're talking about the health and the safety, and we heard from the teachers' union about the, the social, behavioral, and academic crisis that we're having. And some of that, you know, I hear you, it's better than watching TV. I would argue that in some instances, it might be better to watch TV because you're hearing dialogue and you're witnessing, usually there's a conflict and then there's a resolution, but when you're just gaming one-on-one, um, that really does something. And I know that the K through two students may not be sophisticated enough because they just got their devices, but these kids are mighty smart. They find these back doors and, I mean, they crack that school Wi-Fi in high school within just forty-eight hours.
Absolutely. My, my, I had a high school living with me who did it all the time.
They're what?
I had a high school living with me. They, they were on Pakistani YouTube.
Well, I, I, I would say you make some valid points, uh, and people hack everything. I mean, that's just part of the process, but going back to even, uh, behavior issues that, that, I'm not, the issues that are, that were mentioned tonight and that we've heard also from principals and teachers about student behavior issues, mental health issues, is outside of technology.
I, I understand that.
Actually, a lot of this stuff existed pre-COVID. It was just kinda hidden in the background.
Exacerbated.
I think being in isolation more has, of course, increased that, and we have more need, like I said, we have more need than we have services that we can provide our people, uh, but I would not tie it all back to technology. But I also think that there's a, the perception is out there that we're pushing technology. If anything, for me, I'm pushing teaching students how to read. Teach them to read so that that teaching them to read by kindergarten, not third grade, uh, so that we don't continue to see scores like this. But I just think sometimes things get lumped into the same category, and there's some things that we could do better, uh, I don't disagree on, uh, but I just, I just don't want it to be all covered under this technology or why technology is bad, because we have to be able to change and make sure that our students are ready, just like you heard, uh, foreign language teachers talk about students learning a second language. Our students need to be able to keep up with, uh, the techno, technology changes that are occurring. And what frightens me when I keep hearing people say, "We need to get rid of this, we get rid of this," then we're going back once again to a have and have-not structure. Because when we get rid of technology or access to Chromebooks, iPads, laptops, the parents who can afford it, their students are gonna continue to go, they're gonna learn to code, they're gonna learn to do all those things, get those great jobs. Students of poverty are gonna still be sitting in the same place with no access. So I think we have to be careful about saying what we, we wanna take away and say, "How do we monitor better? How do we ensure that there's more direct instruction?"
How do we provide better? I don't, I, I have not heard anybody say that we gotta get rid of technology, and I'm glad that you said laptop, because we don't have laptops. And I'm glad that you said that, you know, the higher socioeconomic kids will code and the poor kids will just left behind. We're not currently coding.
Oh, but the word is coming.
Okay, great.
You have an announcement.
I, because we have, you know, Chromebooks, they're dummy computers.
No, I, I disagree with you on that. Uh, they're not dummy computers, uh, and in, in the information, um, and actually Bruce, um, Mrs. Douglas, if you would just actually come up a little bit, as opposed to staying there, to talk about how students have access, like our project lead the way, because there's a perception that all we do is push, push out Chromebooks, there are no access to laptops. But the Chromebooks were designed for a particular purpose, a usage purpose, but we have other access. So can you just kinda globally talk about the different levels of access in our district, please?
Yep. So at the elementary level, we'll start there. So now our early childhood and kindergarten students have iPads on a one-to-one basis. Along with that, they also have access to a Chromebook cart that our instructional technologists are able to bring in and do things like I Ready assessments and teaching them how to utilize them.
What grade is it?
That's at the early childhood, so pre-K.
Four-year-olds, okay.
Yeah. Then we gotta swap that when you get the first grade.
They do I Ready at four-year-olds?
At kindergarten.
Kindergarten, okay.
At the beginning of the middle of the year, I believe, yeah. Um, then at your first through fifth grade, they have one-to-one Chromebooks. We also have a set of iPads in the library that can be checked out and you utilize them different ways. Um, and then, um, we also do have coding that happens on Chromebooks. Um, so even at that early childhood level, I think, beginning at kindergarten, first grade, kindergarten, we do have some of that coding instruction that happens through different programs on Chromebooks. At the middle school level, we now have Chromebooks six through eight, one-to-one, but then we have our project lead the way classrooms that have laptops that, um, take it into a deeper level of coding, um, along with some science pieces, I think that also have the laptops.
Well, so, um, the children who are, who are in those PLTW classes?
Yeah. And then in our music classes at the middle school level and also at the elementary level, we have iPads available that supports the curricular resources that are provided to those teachers. And then once we get to high school, we have a more variety as well. So we have our PLTW classes that still have laptops. Um, our media, our journalism have Mac labs that provide them the ability to use Apple products, like MacBooks and iMac and various Adobe softwares that are available.
They'll stay in the school, though.
They'll stay in the school.
And how do they know how to use these MacBooks?
That's part of what the teachers are providing through that.
In the media class, teaches them how to use it.
Yep. And utilize very specific industry-based softwares at that point. Um, I think that also includes some, you know, CAD machines and some CNC machines that start to get more specialized as we get into the high school level. Um, every school has a 3D printer available to them, um, that usually librarian is running, it's usually functioned in the library. Um, I think at the high school level, there may be a couple other classrooms that might have a 3D printer as well. Um, so there's kind of a variety and a spectrum of technology that we provide from the K-12 level. And by the time we get to that high school level, we wanna make sure they have, they've experienced and have the opportunity to experience multiple technologies, because we know, I know, I use Windows, Android, iOS every single day. So making sure students have that experience is definitely important.
Well, um, I also had some questions about the presentation.
Can we actually do one celebration, though?
Yes.
So here's what, what we should be celebrating. You have the, the executive director of instructional technology, uh, information technology. And he also spoke to the instructional tools that we're utilizing based on the collaboration between the curriculum department and the IT department. That's what we should be celebrating, because we're trying to break down silos. You did an excellent job, because most IT, uh, directors are not hitting the instructional pieces. They can speak globally about what's happening, so thank you, we're celebrating.
It is a celebration.
Now, you said, you have some more questions?
Um, yes. Um, well, I just, if I may just share a, a couple. Uh, I was speaking on Halloween night with a student that was at Glendale. He just happened to be at my home, and struck up a conversation, and he had moved over from eighth grade from a parochial school over to high school, and I said, "Well, do And I said, well, do you feel that you were well-prepared? Yes, I was well-prepared. And I said, what are the big differences? And within a few minutes, I, he basically said, because, you know, nope, they don't have any books, none at all, no textbooks. And I said, but surely you have them online. Surely you have. And he was in chemistry, he was in algebra two. I didn't ask about anything else. Oh, and in English. No, no books, no books, no books. And then he laughed at me and said, you do know that textbooks are a thing of the past. And I said, well, then how do you learn? And he said, well, everything's on the computer. And I said, but, but when you go, but when you have to read about something, when you have to do research, where do you find it? And he said, Google. And I said, well, are you just getting the answer or are you also learning? And he said, well, I'm getting the answer, but I'm also learning. And I said, so you feel like you're learning? And he said, yeah, I'm learning, but I have concerns. I have concerns because I hear from another parent who also says, and this is an educator, an SPS educator, teacher that said, I, I just couldn't believe that my son asked me to read what was on his diploma because it was in cursive and he couldn't read it. So I, I hear everything that.
Thank you, thank you.
All this, it sounds great and I think it would be great for me, but I just, I have concerns about if it's delivering what our intentions are asking, but is it having the intended effect? Because it's not what I'm hearing. I just feel like we have to be more responsible in how we deliver it. And I know that you have a heart and passion for this and I'm really excited. Thank you for listening to me. I know that we have spoken about this, about my concerns and some suggestions I've had, you know, specifically with, thank you for coding. It needs to be a part of elementary education.
Keyboarding.
We're more focused on the.
Keyboarding, high school, all levels, kids to learn how to keyboard. And, you know, when I come back to the social behavioral, I have to, back to disagree with you on, I think that there's a lot of access and I, and I know that the home environment is important, but we have to be responsible and watchful. I think that social media can be very dangerous. YouTube, all this stuff, it opens the door to kids younger and younger. When they're older in high school, you know, there's a point where like, well, you know, they're going to grow up. You know, it's out there, they're going to see it. I just have some concerns with the younger children and the sort of access they're getting and how the computers are being used. I think it's great to have technology, but maybe we shouldn't take it home. Maybe the teacher's there, she or he has control of, okay, we're going to learn coding. We're going to do this. We're going to do 20 minutes of this. And then, you know what, guys, it stays here. Because it's great that the K-32 students are doing Lexia and Dreambox, but I'm hearing other elementary students, maybe in the third through fifth grade, who are not, who are choosing to stay inside and watch a movie than to go outside and play, which is so important for their development. So I'm just coming at it from a safety and health perspective of what are some of the ways that we can tweak it, modify this delivery of digital, which is absolutely necessary for education? I mean, we have, yes, but can we be more responsible? And that's the conversation.
My eyes are twinkling. Several things that you said I would like to address. And I want to just say actually thank you to the entire board. These are, this is the type of conversation that we should be holding, whether we agree or disagree. And it's great that we have the time to do that. I know we changed our structure of public speakers. We reduced that time. Because this is the business of the board in the district. Cursive writing, it goes between, it's a pending, you all tell me. Sometimes a school district across the country took it out of the curriculum by third grade. Some have put it back in. It changes. We still need to address that. It's happening, probably not at 100% fidelity to where we would need it to. So you're right. Probably the current high school students and some middle school students are experiencing issues if they did not receive that foundation in elementary school. So I'm not disagreeing with you.
So we're bringing it back?
I didn't say we were bringing it back.
Oh, I know. It's been gone a long time.
We didn't necessarily take it out. It is still a standard.
Oh, it is?
Right? It's still a standard. Yeah, we still teach it. So, but with implementation and fidelity, we need to focus on fidelity. So we did not take it out. I want to make sure I did say it like you were saying. It was an issue, but some places in some states, they did remove it as a standard requirement in the curriculum. Textbooks. So here is the biggie around the conversations with textbooks. And number one, I was going to announce this later, but I want to make sure we're clear. On December 14th at our SPS University, one of our big sessions is how to navigate campus. Because there is a perception, just because there's not a hardbound copy, that we don't, students don't have access to what a textbook looks like. So if I take, and Dr. Pilly, you need to make sure I'm getting these courses correct. If I'm a Spanish one student, there is a Spanish one book for me available and accessible online. If I'm a special education student and I do need a copy, you can go home with me. A parent can request it. Now, other parents can also request if students have issues or concerns. What the district did and districts across the country did this. Okay, because I don't want any negativity. They just didn't buy a textbook for every child across the district. They only bought a certain set or a certain number. If I was to, please correct me, because by the way, I'm giving you my own personal experience also from previous experiences. But online, they have access and we have those listed courses. Part of the problem, where I agree with you is we haven't done a good job of communicating that to parents. We talked about, what, about two weeks ago, Dr. Pilly, we're going to clean up our parent, our website so parents know how to access it. We use like learning support instead of just saying curriculum. So parents know if I'm looking and searching for something, I know how to search for things. But we, part of SPS will navigate until parents have to do it. We need to spend some time also making sure we have, we have not done a good job. Because I own, I'm just telling you as the outsider coming in of saying to principals and teachers, here's the information you can share with parents ever and later in the textbook. Because you did, you're right. You brought that concern up to me. That's a concern. And I had one interpretation and understanding and then they shared with me, okay, this is what we did as a district years ago. Dr. Pilly actually came in two weeks ago, three weeks ago. She had to walk me through, I said, show me, show me an Algebra One textbook. I want to see it online. Then I said, show me the consumables. She brought me the consumables in so I could see it for myself.
So we have these things?
We have.
Because I'm telling you, I had a child in Algebra, in Spanish one and I still probably have that email that says, we do not have a textbook for you, online even.
Did you, can you speak up please?
Do we have a Spanish one textbook online? And if I were to request to have a hard copy, could I receive it if my child did not have an IP or a 504?
So if we request to receive the like physical or printed copy of one of these series, so it's not always going to turn out like a textbook that would be like a binder or a magic textbook or a teacher's notebook and come here and go look.
Well, not a textbook, but it, so there's not an Algebra One textbook, but there's Algebra One resources.
So before a special education student or parent, especially requests a part of the IP or an actual physical hard copy, they receive it. If you as a parent says, I just need, you know, my child still needs to see the paper. They need to be able to manipulate that. The teacher's going to print that text, that portion. They're not going to print the whole textbook at one time. Now, I'm just, if I'm wrong, money-wise, we're not going to do that. But if you need chapters one, I'm using examples, chapters one through five, or whatever we need for that particular quarter, that request can be made and then it goes and it's printed. Am I correct on that? Because I want to make sure I'm giving the information out correctly.
It's a textbook without a cover.
Exactly, that's what it is.
And it tracks. It tracks with what's going on at the college level. Because I, I know, as a professor, I no longer get, I, I don't want any more textbooks. They send them to me whenever, and so I actually get all mine via Vitalsource online and all of my textbooks are there.
They're available, but they're available if a student wanted to purchase.
Yeah, they're all there. But they are there to purchase, actually some companies, actually the company that I'm working right now, they're moving toward no longer doing them. You can purchase them and it's cheaper for the student because textbooks are very expensive. It's cheaper for the student and they have access at multiple places. And so it is a movement that's happening also at the college level too, that people aren't buying the hard.
I understand that and I understand that adults may choose to have nearsightedness and bad posture and all the things that come with extended screen time. They are adults and they are in charge of their lives, but these are children and we're in charge of them. And there are consequences to extended screen time. I mean, we are seeing kids, I mean, there was a study that came out of USC that, I mean, right now in Asia, because they're ahead of us in the screen implementation, 90% of the kids in Asian countries have to wear glasses. They're nearsighted. So is that going to be our future? We've doubled our numbers of kids who are nearsighted, who need glasses or contacts to read. So I just, the, I, I get that and I think that's sad. But we're feeding into that because they no longer want to print because these children aren't. But I just want to be responsible and I want us to be aware of some of the negative consequences in that we are, we, we are in charge of that and we, we have to step up and say, is this exactly the road we want to be on? Yes, this is the path we want to be on, but is this exactly the way we want to go about it?
Yeah, and I would say, I'm going to, I'm going to wrap up our conversation to keep moving us forward and I appreciate every, hearing from everyone tonight.
I haven't got to say a word.
And you know what? I still have some tiny questions on the presentation.
Just tell you.
Only because there was a mistake that I want to, I just noticed. There was a mistake and it looks bad, but it's not as bad. It's not a celebration.
I did.
But on.
God did not hear me say what I said, but I did have a question.
Okay, did you get to answer?
It has been answered, yes. Thank you.
On number 15.
You have to, you have to make it known that you want to say something.
For the gap, for free versus full and black versus white, that number's not correct because that's a horrifying number. So it says 10%. That should be 2.1 minus 1.6. So that should be 0.5%. And the free versus full, just because that number was so big that I was like, ooh. Because I saw that there was a gain made in iReady math for both white and black students. They actually made gains.
Can you repeat that?
Oh, on slide 15, correct me if I'm wrong, people. So on slide 15, if you look at, this is iReady math six through eight, that both, you know, although all the students lost 1.9 percentage points, but there was a gain of 2.1 for white students and 1.6 for black students. So the difference between that would be 0.5. So the gap should be 0.5 and not 10%. Did I say that right? And then the same thing for free versus full. It says 2.6, but when you go over, free is negative 2.1 and full is negative 4.0. So that difference is actually 1.9. Not, not very significant.
I don't think those two sections, those numbers don't go together.
They do because I tracked all the ones in the previous ones. That's how they're calculated because it's the difference and the gap is.
The actual is the gap, the actual is the difference. The gap is from year to year.
Yes, I'm looking at the previous years. That's where I'm calculating the gap from.
Where's the previous year listed?
Um, right in the second column of FY '21, it says diff.
Okay.
So like, let's look at ELO versus non-ELO.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay.
You're looking at 18, 19.
Yeah, I think it's just a typo. I mean, it's just such a glaringly large number that I was like, whoa. And then can I ask a couple really quick questions? Just clarification questions. Slide 17, it said, the ELA teachers on implementation of new curriculum. This is the savas or savas, am I, is that the new curriculum? Just want to make sure. My perspective, okay. So that is, okay. And then the next question I had was, I think somebody asked and it was already answered on the daily intervention block time. The next one, okay, so I just want clarification. I know we've talked about this before. So Mastery Connect is an assessment platform that collects data and EduClimber is a platform that stores and organizes it. Did I get that right? Did I get that right? Because I'm trying to understand. So Mastery Connect is not instructional, it's assessment. And then EduClimber is not assessment. It takes the assessment data and stores it and organizes it for tracking purposes and follow-up. Got that? Okay, thank you. And then, and then on slide 26, again, clarification on Naviance. And I think it's just, just a typo or it said, of additional last bullet point, support the adoption of additional instructional software such as the Naviance readiness solution. Okay, but Naviance is not instructional. It's the, that's the program that helps kids decide what they're attracted to career-wise, what is the best fit for them, right? But it's not like instruction.
Right.
I'm understanding it. Okay, because we talked about that. Okay. So then, these are just clarification points that I wanted to make. And I got the ELA. And then on slide 24, the first bullet point said, K-5 leaders are all, were trained in illustrative math during summer of 2021. Leaders as in principals, right? But I'm assuming all the teachers had been previously. The teachers have already all been trained. This was just the principal's term. Okay. Okay, so it just said leaders and I thought, what about the teachers? Okay, so the teachers were also trained. Okay, got it. And I have a question on the white paper, so I'll wait till we get to that. It's just. No, the white paper is not this. It's the, it's a whole nother strata, focus area.
There's no presentation on that white paper.
So I can ask? Oh, so this is really quick. So there was a lot of places I read that said, this, you could tell that this was written maybe earlier than this presentation because it said, we're going to implement, because of the COVID disruption, we're going to implement it in the fall of 2021. In fact, one of them said, we're going to restart this program in the summer of 2021. Can I assume that all that happened?
Let's, do you have one in particular that you can look at?
Oh, okay, I got it.
I don't want to.
Oh, you can get back with me later on this though, but here's like, let's see. I didn't write it down. It came up over and over as I was reading it. Like there was a disruption in this and then, like GoCaps was, we're going to start again in the fall of, oh, the health, the Mercy Health thing, the choice.
Our magnum.
That we're going to start that back up in 2021. And then there was, it came up several times and one of them was summer. That we're going to start this back up in.
What, which page?
Summer.
Like page 23 is what I'm looking at. It resumed during summer 2021.
Yeah, kind of did.
But will resume, meaning it was written in the past, meaning instead of resumed it.
And it was just a repeating, like I saw it probably four times. So.
So because you got to remember staff starts working on this throughout, they've worked on the component and that was another reason we want to specialize in.
So my question was, we did resume all these activities. So COVID did not stop any of this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Denise. Yeah. Because if I don't say anything, people think I'm not paying attention. Oh, no, just kidding. Okay.
I would like to ask how we're using transparencies, but I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
Overhead projectors and transparencies.
That's right.
That takes us back a few years.
That's how, that's when I started teaching, that's, I started teaching it was transparencies and overhead projectors, but that just dates me.
Some of this conversation is a little interesting because I, I can remember back in days when the concern was that, you know, that we not overuse overhead, our overhead projectors when we got them in the classroom. So I'm going to date myself, you know, and our transparencies. And then also, and I'm certainly not making fun, but it's always been a concern of how, that we don't overkill the use of a new tech tool, you know, tool, technology. And then it was the videos and I don't know how many people here even remember back when we got the TVs in our classroom, Channel One. Do you want to remember that? And how parents were so concerned. They didn't want their children to see that five-minute.
We just tell, with a company called Channel One provided if a school district entered into a partnership and every classroom would receive a TV, but you had to agree to show a little five to seven-minute news segment.
And it was a really, really big deal. And I, yeah, so, you know, things kind of go around, but it's all in balance. And a lot of what Mary Ann has brought forward tonight is that balance. And so I think we, and we've heard from our teachers, the concern about the, what we, you know, what they feel like they're being asked to do and that balance because they have gone from having a normal year till spring break and then kids didn't come back. And so we had to flip to virtual and, and trying to do that. And then, and then coming back the next year, two days a week and, and then virtual and asking them to do that. And now we're back and so I think, and I think you mentioned the word grace and patience a little bit ago, about giving them the time then to make that transition from back to teacher instruction, which is what they've done all their lives until just recently. So giving them that time to make that transition back. But I've heard a couple of things tonight that, that, one of the ahas. And so my affirmation was that last year was just something I hope we never, ever have to go through again and/or have to compare our students' progress, academic progress, who fought last year with life. So, and yes, and I agree with Sharita that it is heartbreaking for us to see our students' academic progress because we didn't have them half the time, half the year. But they were learning at home. So we, and we don't know what that environment was like. But one of the ahas is the focus of the district on training principals. And not that we haven't trained principals in the past, we've always had principal professional development, but training them now in the new curriculum. I'm not sure we've always done a really good job of letting them know or giving them that training of what the new curriculum looks like, having been in a curriculum role. So they're learning alongside their teachers what that new curriculum looks like because they are the instructional leader in the building. And so they are the ones that will be going into the rooms and they'll be observing what the teachers are teaching. So that to me was a good aha, that we're on the right track with that. And, and I think Sharita kind of brought that up in her comments about the principal and how important it is for their training. And then asking, then I kind of have the question about when we're looking at our course failures, there's so much involved in when a student fails a course or courses. And one of the big pieces of that is student attendance. If they're not there, they're probably not going to be successful in that course. And so we all know that attendance was a huge issue for our kids last year. Maybe some even that year before. So I'm looking forward to us being able to have a little bit better way to monitor and. So I'm looking forward to us being able to have a little bit better way to monitor and get them to school. And, and a little thing for Mary Ann about the books. You know, when we purchase a book, and Allison, are you there so you can hear me? When we purchase a book for the district, we're not purchasing a book that meets all the needs of our teachers. For example, we, we write our major instructional goals as to what we as a district want our students to know and be able to do. And then when you go out and select a book, you're not going to find a book that does all of that. We're looking for books that, a book or a resource that helps our teachers do most of that. But then they're on their own as the expert to find what other pieces and parts they need. So we're, we're having a book for a student is probably not going to be everything that they need to help them learn what it is we want them to learn. Is that still the case in this day and time? So they're still the expert in terms of, you know, we're still dependent on that teacher's knowledge that they, you know, that they gather, went to school in their content area to be able to do. So, and then that brings me back to the point of our gentleman tonight that, that mentioned to us that it's time for the school board. I wrote it down, time for the school board to stand up and allow teachers to teach. And so I, as the school board member, where, where does our community get the impression that we, sitting here, are standing in the way of our teachers' teaching? And where are they getting the impression that we are making decisions what they teach and how they teach it? And I certainly don't want our conversation here tonight to, anyone to mistake that we are doing that, because we certainly are not. Our conversation is making sure that we're getting the resources needed in the hands of our teachers so they can do what they've gone to school for, some of them eight years or more, to, to be able to do. So I guess that's just kind of my comments. And I think Granita, you said it a little bit, and Mary Ann used it a little bit. I think we've all kind of said it, but I think of this entire discussion, what's important is that we go forward with, we want to understand what our teachers need so that we as a board can do what we need to do to provide those resources. But we're certainly not telling them what to teach or standing in the way of, you know, teachers, we value their expertise. And as Granita said, it's so, well, when they close the classroom door, that's where, that's where the work gets done. They're teaching those kids and we just need to make sure we, we're doing what they need to help them do that. And their principals know what they, you know, can help them do.
I think in the spirit of transparency, and we did here with, from SNEA and we heard this also from principals and then some other teachers, that when this year, there are some things that we probably, that we could have, not probably, that we could have done differently as it relates to rollout and continuing with things. And I think all of us, and I know I'm guilty, not only as a leader, but just a human being, that we want everything to be back to normal. And so we want all the things that we pushed. And so there were some things that we could have done differently in August when we shared information with, with teachers or principals. And so that's part of, like I said, I already said, on November 19th, when we start thinking about 22, 23, and that there's going to be a drop dead date of, if it's not communicated by this date, it doesn't get implemented. It doesn't, we're not going to add things and bring things to the table in August. That's too late for principals and teachers to plan. But like I said, we're learning and we're listening. And as we listen, we're making notes that last because Dr. Holt has to pull up that 22, 23 folder. We have a whole Google Drive of every time we hear some concerns, we drop it in the folder. It's a part of our agenda. How do we address it? So I think some of that, some of that frustration came from some things that we did announce in August that we should have announced soon.
I'm going to wrap up our time to keep us, yes, it has been a good discussion and to keep us on track, which is the question for you not to answer tonight, but one of our questions on our sheet, which is, "How can the board help?" So as you, our leader, taking in all of this information, not to be answered tonight, but we look forward to hearing from you through the upcoming entry plan. And as you learn this next year with a new lens of looking at our district, how can we help you as a board? Because that is our role. I'll move us on and thank you, Dr. Holt, and those who participated in helping answer questions tonight. The, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is report from administration. That leads us to our superintendent update.
Oh goodness, I have a lot of updates tonight. A lot of little announcements. I want to make sure. The SPS Magnet School Lottery application window opened yesterday and will close on December 3rd. Students currently in grades three, four, and seven can apply to attend a year-long magnet school during the 2022, 23 school year. Students are selected by random lottery for these innovative year-long programs housed in specially-designed learning environments. So our third graders can apply for our brand-new Ag Academy. That new facility will be open and ready for next school year. That's really exciting. Current fourth grade students can apply for Ag Academy, Academy of Exploration, Academy of Find and Performing Arts, and Woo. And then our current seventh graders can apply for Health Sciences Academy at Mercy.
You got the chair.
The window to apply for transitional transfers will open tomorrow and close on December 10th. A transitional transfer request is for an SPS eligible student going from fifth grade to sixth grade or eighth grade to ninth grade who wish to attend a site other than the one assigned by their home address. This type of transfer is part of SPS' open enrollment process. As I stated earlier, our first SPS university will be held on December 14th from 5:00 to 8:00 at Parkview High School. Our thought exchange seeking feedback about themes for the event closed on class Friday and generated more than 6,700 ratings of thoughts shared by 300 people. Feedback was used to shape the December 14th agenda and will also influence later events in the spring. A thought exchange will go out to staff and families later this week to seek input, input on the draft version of the 22, 23 school year calendar. That feedback will be utilized to finalize the option that will be presented to the board for a pool at our next meeting. A survey, get ready, a survey, seeking updated feedback. To recall, we sent out a survey the first Friday during the first week of school on the three-tiered transportation schedule and related school start time. It will be sent to staff and families later this month and then the results will be shared with the board in December as part of our recommended plans for 22, 23. SPS is also partnering with GO CSD, that's the Greater Ozarks Cooperative School Districts, to participate in Teacher Proud Tuesday. On the second Tuesday of each month, our next surprise visit will be held on Tuesday, November 9th. This effort created by GO CSD provides an opportunity to celebrate the teaching profession across our region while also helping to recruit future teachers and boost morale amongst staff. So next week, SPS and the Health Department will announce a partnership to provide vaccine clinics for students ages 5 through 11, those who are newly eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. We will be promoting these clinics as a way to give the gift of health for the holidays. These vaccination events will provide an opportunity for all eligible SPS staff and students to be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 by winter break, which is December 23rd. Once everyone is eligible for the vaccine and has ample opportunity to receive doses in November and December, we anticipate that the masking requirement will be lifted in middle, mid-January, after our turn from strength, from winter break or as cases allow. It is important to note that masking on school buses is a federal mandate. Therefore, that requirement will remain in effect until the mandate is lifted by the government. Please stay tuned for more details next week.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lathan.
I presume the calendar will make everybody happy.
It's always a highlight. Jay, it's always a... 100%, it's always a highlight.
Like it's behind you.
The, our next agenda item is board comments. Are there any board, additional board comments at this time? I know that, that the majority of us will be attending MSBA this week and getting the opportunity to learn more from, at the state level. So we look forward to, and we also have a couple SPS presentations that will be taking place as well. So we appreciate our district representing us and sharing in the learning. Tammy has made all those arrangements for us, so thank you and have those arrangements booked. Seeing no board comments, I'll move on to...
I just want to make a quick comment. I don't know if anybody, you're all aware, but is it yesterday, day before yesterday, Green County has been removed off of the hotspot from the Missouri Public Health. Just put it out there. Our numbers are great. Hospitals are doing great.
Thank you.
We're back to almost May.
While we are lining, the patient information coming up the front.
I, I do have concerns about mask fatigue. Because in July, our hospitals were almost at capacity. It was a really rough time, but no mask mandate in the city. Because I guess they felt like they just couldn't do it. They couldn't really push through. And I'm disheartened to see that we are at a time where I feel that this is a time to give the kids a break because you don't know what's on the horizon. We could have the flu outbreak we had two years ago, which was awful. We could have another variant. And I'm just seeing a lot of fatigue. Kids are not wearing those masks appropriately. There's just, I just would like us to have another conversation. Just think about it because we want the health and safety of the students. And I think if we go on and on and on, there is going to be no buy-in when it really counts, when it's really going to get madder. And I say this because I get the sense from Green County Health that a lot is being tied to vaccination rates. And my understanding, or the sense I get, is adults who are not vaccinated are very unlikely to vaccinate their children. They're just not. And in the medical community, even amongst physicians who have vaccinated their children, there is hesitancy, even in states like Massachusetts that have the highest vaccination rate. They are anticipating lowered vaccination rates for kids 5 through 11. Understandably so, because we're just waiting for more experience. And so I think that if we hold out for that, it may never come, A. And B, we don't know what's going to happen. We're on the down. So I, I, there is, mask fatigue is real. And I just think we need to be cognizant of it and move forward, knowing that, acknowledging that it's, it's, it's becoming a joke in the sense that, you know, I understand Katie Towns' position, but I also realize that she doesn't have a problem going to a big party sitting next to me with 300 people and nobody came in with masks. And there's no vaccination, you know, card or there's nobody checking at the door. You know, and then the same person will walk into a school property and, you know, it's just, there's a bit of a hypocrisy. And I think that we have to, we have to look at this. I wasn't planning on making a comment, but since you, you brought it up and you put mid-January, see, I think mid-January is a good time in the sense, not, I think we stop now and we bring it back for the first two weeks of January, just for two weeks, because kids have gone and they've traveled and they've done, you don't know where they've gone. We're not a hotspot anymore. We don't know where else is or what will happen then. But I just see problems. I just thought I'd put my two cents in there. Hadn't planned on it.
No, no, and our respect or two cents. And if, just to kind of share with you, I communicated to the board Thursday, communicated again with you all today prior to the meeting, that our team has a meeting tomorrow with the Health Department. And I also want to make sure it's clear, this is not about one individual recommendation or decision. It's about all the factors when we look at the information that we receive. And you're right, we're all fatigued. We all are as it relates to it. But we also know, like you said, flu season is here. There are other things...
Not yet, but it will be.
Well, it will be, but it started in some places. There are people who've traveled. But the reason we set a goal, because you're right, people want to know what's the end. We did not set a percentage as it relates to vaccinations. We said that we wanted to utilize the, basically the next two months, November and December, for as many people that would like to get vaccinated, especially as it relates to parents vaccinating their school-aged children, giving that opportunity. So we're thinking a little bit opposite of what you're saying is, we have two ma, really three, three major holidays. Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year. If we can get through those holidays and there, we don't see an increase in positivity rate in the community, hospitalization rates, then we can make that decision. We projected the middle of January. It could be earlier. But we want to look at those factors. But I want you to know that, and that's why we're saying, okay, we wanted to get information out so people know. And we, this is everyday conversation, but I'll go back to what you talk about, there is gathering. I shared with our team, I had an opportunity over the weekend to attend various events, but all of it was mandated verification of vaccination. So everyone there had to show proof, had to have ID, or, I mean, you know. And so I get that in that sense. We have tried to, I believe our, I do know the data supporting that we have not had to close down the entire district, close down the entire school based on an increase in spread. And so we get it. We feel that same frustration, but I'd rather be safe and sorry.
I just don't want to get into a situation where we lifted in mid-January and we, and that's when everything hits the fan.
And you're right, but if we lift it and everything hits, we have to go back to it, so...
It's going to be hard. That's, that's what I'm saying.
But I'd rather be safe and sorry.
I think, that's, that's, that's my thing. I, I hear what you're saying. I would not, I would not go so far as to say that it is a joke. My, my perspective, talking with teachers and I have to see it in the classroom, kids at whatever age are a whole lot better than adults about dealing with masking. I mean, we could, we can talk about the sort of technical aspects of this mask or that mask. My sense is that with vaccinations becoming available for our primary clientele, the majority of our students have just become eligible for the vaccine, right? Through 5 and 11. Now, you're right. I think if someone has chosen not to get vaccinated him or herself, it's probably unlikely that he or she is going to have vaccinated. But there are also a lot of us who have been vaccinated who would get our kids vaccinated, maybe not all, who have gotten vaccinated themselves. And I think safe is better than sorry. It may be, right, that there will be another variant out there. Goodness, I hope not. Right, but these challenging questions that we're asking ourselves, every educational provider in the world, at least in this area, probably in the world, is dealing with exactly the same thing. An institution I know well that has an aggregate vaccination rate above 80% is still requiring masks in classrooms.
Which one is that?
Institution a little bit to the north, right?
MSU is still requiring in the classroom.
Well, no, there's only an educational area, so if you're in the PSC, you don't have to. So like if you're in a mask...
In a classroom, you have to.
Yeah, but you can be in a mask gathering in the cafeteria and nobody has to.
But I would just echo what I hear you say, echo what I hear you saying and clarify what I hear you saying is that our responsibility is to keep kids and staff safe. And kids haven't had the opportunity, but now they do. And so if parents choose to do that, we, we want, we, the district, want to give them time to do that. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yes, that is correct.
And can you, I, I also want you to look at the data out there on masking in the sense that we do not provide children with surgical, adequate surgical masks. So that is a valid point. If you go onto any playground out there right now on Friday, they're littered with masks. And sometimes I think, is that done, is some kid going to come back on Monday and say, "There's my dinosaur mask," and just put it right back on? Not good. And also, please look at the long-term effects or the effects of long-term masking. It does create harm for children. They're, they're not little adults. They're not little people. They're, they're different. Their pathophysiology is different. And a lot of these studies are coming out of really large, valid institutions. And there's a lot of global data, just like there's global data going into technology and digital platforms. There's tons of global data, tons of large districts, whole, entire countries that never shut down, didn't mask, did mask, you know, all sorts. It's all out there. And I encourage you to, to review it. Thank you so much.
Our upcoming meetings, we have, I've already mentioned MSBA. We have our November 16th regular scheduled meeting. That's already on our calendar. And just a reminder that we do have Thanksgiving holiday where the district is closed the 24th through the 26th. If you have any plus deltas from our meeting tonight, please... If you have any plus deltas from our, um, meetings tonight, please put those on a post-it note and hand those to Tammy on your way out, as we always look at ways to improve our, our, uh, board meetings. There is no need to go into executive session tonight, so I will ask then if, give me just a second, the recommended action is that the board meeting adjourned.
Yeah, there isn't that statement, is there?
I know. We don't usually get to do this, so I was like, I need to know what to read here. Yes, would somebody be willing to make that motion? Maryam will make the motion. Is there a second? Sharita will second it, and, um, I'm assuming there's no discussion, so we will be ready to vote. I'm not, I'm not answering that, Jo.
All I know is I'm not looking at my phone, or what's happening with the World Series.
Oh, Buck, it was There's a game, a game.
Thank you all.
Motion passes. That, thank you for those who joined us. That concludes our
We don't want to take our